Like the someone's at building board meeting on Tuesday, June 20th, order at 6:00 PM. Roll call.
Everything John.
That's right.
Hello Bruno.
Caleb Guy.
Chris Dubeck.
Myself Mike Capers.
Tony Kern.
Brian Chrome.
Public. Actually, the stand in the Latin region. Really is the way United States of America. Sands Foundation. It is liberated and devastated. Public comments on agenda items, two minutes per person, fourteen minutes per item. Anybody have any public comment? Please state your name and your address.
Cherie Link, address is 252 Main Street Somerset, Wisconsin. And I am commenting regarding new business item seven D for a discussion of possible approval to amend the license of premise class B and C line license from Kennedy's Cafe. We are asking for an extension for that to run to my happy place, the conjoining property into our parking lot for Somerset Market Fest. We've worked with the other bars to put the market fest pieces together. Everybody was in agreement that we would be able to have the three current liquor licenses extended and have outdoor patio seating, of course, Kennedy's doesn't really have the space for that, too close to residential. So we would like to have that extended through to my happy place to be able to use our porch patio, the parking lot, maybe set up a tent there during market fest and then other events that my happy place holds in person at 252 Main Street. So I'd love to get that approved so we can have some fun during market fest.
Thank you.
I apologize that I have to scoot because we're setting up a tent for fireworks stand at American Region. But if there's any questions, I will try to get back as soon as we get that done.
Or is that before you could probably try to move it up on the agenda? You know, roll down a minute.
Perfect.
Any other public comment?
Danielle Erickson, Sixth Street, Somerset, Wisconsin. I am chapter chair for mom for Liberty St. Croix County. New chapter here, I have four kids in the public school system with my oldest being in high school. And I just wanted to update you all on the book now, and she may have heard about it, you may not have. Earlier this year, the parents of Somerset School District requested that thirty-three books be pulled from the high school library due to content that was not appropriate for minors. That includes rape scenes, prostitution, incest, traffic, sex scenes, drug use, and sex trafficking. I have some information if anybody's interested, we have a book list on here, the QR code, and also some excerpts, so you can see some of the material. One book has been reviewed thus far by a secret and biased book review committee. The first book is The Perks of Being a Lawflower. The committee voted to keep the book in the school library. The parent group appealed this decision and the decision was made last night by the school board about a four to three to keep the book in the library. That vote came down four to three to avoid a lawsuit, not because it's a good piece of literature. This is not a book fan. This is a request to remove books that are inappropriate for minors, sudographic sexual content and adult content. These books can still be accessed at the local public library, allowing books such as these to remain in our school's libraries of the dangerous precedent that opens the door to even more pornographic literature, both in the library and in curriculum. And this book was a textbook, two thousand and eighteen and nineteen in English junior class. So just to let you know that, I'm gonna leave this information right over here if anybody's interested in taking one of those. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
David Waller, 494th Drive, Somerset. Would like to make a comment on current situation that I've heard gossip on involving our village president and somebody else in the community. I would like to say that I'm deeply embarrassed by the community. I think we've been down this road before. The past board president and whatever situation is there, I was aware because friends of mine are on both sides and it's hurting and troublesome. Anybody that knows me, they know that I'm a good public speaker and I enjoy the opportunity to get a public voice on. This is a hard thing to say. I think that Mike Capers deserves a right to serve his presidency here and do what he can. He has a plan, he has a dream, just like me. I put a hockey rink up on top of my lot up there and invite everybody in the community to skate in my ring. And it's all for peace and goodwill. What he has done, I have people that have come to me and have expressed that what they've seen so far because they had a negative feeling for Mike. They have turned around and have a positive feeling for Mike. Give him a chance. I do not believe in this recall bull crap and I will never support a recall for anybody. Give him a chance to service to service term. We have issues at the school, which I do agree with you and I do support you. We have a democratic democracy in our country right now who is silencing another opinion, banning another opinion and censoring it. When these phones can have porn at a child's grip twenty-four seven and it's horrendous porn, nothing like I saw when I was a kid. You know, I'm gonna be honest, it's horrendous. And now it's entering slowly but truly into our schools. You know, and there's in this community to attack our village president and not let him finish his turn? I mean, if it's real or if it didn't happen, I don't know.
That's too much.
So all I can tell you is that I'm embarrassed to be in this community. I came in this community with a dream and I'm not leaving with a dream. I came here thirty-nine years ago to coach hockey.
You only got two minutes.
Shyla Williamson, should I change her something?
Brad.
So all I can say is that as a community member who has a dream for this community, wants to see it grow, it's embarrassing to me. And I think that if this situation turns out to be false, the other individual needs reprimandations or reprimand. If Mike turns out to be guilty, he just needs to be told that, hey, it's wrong. I didn't see anything, I never heard anything, I've heard from both sides of the stories now. And I can tell you that, you know, my support's behind Mike. So, but again, I want Somerset to be a community, not a lack of stock. And I'm gonna stand with Mike and help him out to do it, get done what has to be done.
Yeah.
So sorry for me, but it's hard for me to chastise people here.
Yeah.
Anybody else for public comment?
All right, hi, I'm Bailey Sin and I live at thirteen hundred Northwood, Wayne, Brighton, Minnesota. I'm gonna comment on, I guess, seven E. So I was, I'm a friend of Mike Capers and I was with him at me soup days on June tenth. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because I'm guessing that that's what that is referring to. Him and I, or he was at the dunk tank and it was very cold down, he got dunked probably twenty times raising money for the Boy Scouts. And we were walking back towards the cafe on Spring Street so that he could change clothes in the cafe. And as we were walking down Spring Street towards Main Street, a truck stopped in the middle of the road and stopped traffic. I had no idea who was in the truck, but he was trying to get Mike's attention. And we couldn't hear him out with that mic and said, who is that? What did he turn to say? And so Mike approached the truck calmly and kind of leaned in to talk to him. And I don't know really like what was, what words were exchanged or anything like that. I continued across the street. I turned around, I looked, I said, Mike, let's go, because this truck was stopping traffic and they obviously, there was no, I don't really know if they got anywhere, what conversation they had. We stopped and talked to a couple outside of Sportsman's that Mike knew and then walked back to the cafe so that he could change in a warmer clothes. And his son was there and they talked about how well the dunk tank went. And then there was an officer that came to the door a half hour later and said that something had happened and we really didn't know what he was talking about because officer said that, asked if he had jumped on the hood of a truck, which we were confused about because that didn't happen at all. So that's my version of the story. I think that Mike was really calm and I don't really think anything crazy happened. I actually said to Mike, after we crossed the road, I said, who is that guy harassing you? Because I thought the guy was harassing him. And then we have this officer saying this guy thinks that Mike was harassing him, which was not the case at all. So to me, I thought it was a non-issue, maybe even the other way that this man had been harassing Mike. But that's what happened. I wanted to comment on it because here this man doing something good for the community and thank you for my time being a ten. That's all I have to say, like I said, doing something great for the community.
Thirty under twelve street.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. I didn't get your name.
Bailey Sin.
Bailey.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Um, hello, my name's Bill Erickson, I live in the town of Somerset. I'm commenting on what was just talked about because I was the witness in that incident. My wife and I were coming from summer, from Hudson, northbound on Spring Street, past the holiday entrance and I had to stop because there was a truck in the middle of the street and there was an individual that was talking to the truck. We sat for a couple of minutes and basically after that, the truck started to move. Mike, I recognized Mike Capers, he was holding a dog. He stepped up onto the running boards and the vehicle started to move forward and stopped. Mike came off of the truck, stumbled a couple of feet, but didn't go to the ground. And then as he walked, approached to my vehicle, I basically said, hi, I recognize him, I said, hi, Mike, and I continued to move forward. The individual in the truck, as my wife and I passed, asked us if we had seen it, if we saw what occurred. And I said, yes, and we continued home. About three hours later, we didn't think anything of it, it looked like two people just having a conversation. I received a phone call from Officer Kerber and I had to give a statement that night for about ten minutes of what I just talked to you guys about. So yeah, basically to me and to my wife, it looked like a non-issue until I received a phone call from Officer Kerber. So, you know, I decided to show up tonight and saw it on the agenda and state what I said, you know, what I saw, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Do you want ones, boys, anybody? Moving right along, we gotta go in the minutes. I'm gonna make a motion to move seven D on the agenda on the beginning of the agenda, the next item. Is that your motion?
That's a motion.
Three seconds.
Chris, we all second.
Discussion, one favor.
Hi.
Opposed. Great. Anybody have any question or not for the read? So, so someone can.
No. Oh, no, it's not allowed. So I talked to Zach at the Department of Revenue, Alcohol Enforcement, based on what the type of business that you own, own both properties. It would not be allowed in this. Don't do that.
I didn't look into it.
Well, I have this contact information if you want to talk to them.
Still does it have to be dispensed in, so is there any other property of Kennedy's that we could fence in or something? Micers, is it just in front where the tables are input?
It's always been my understanding that as long as you have a lease agreement and it's a property, it's no different than what Quobright did when he borrowed the liquor license to the amphitheater.
So according to statute, it is not allowed in this situation.
How did that happen in the past?
The owners were the same.
So it's because the owners were the same?
Maybe.
Well, not the food and this is one of the very same owners.
So you can contact that, the Department of Revenue for more information. Right, I only gave him what I knew from our conversation and what you submitted. So that was my conversation with him this afternoon.
So even if we have a signed lease between the two properties, he said that one, no, but based on the type of business that you have, it, you're not allowed to have a license in the first place because we're a retail business, not
eligible for a license, a class B license.
For a certain percentage of the sales have to be booed if it's a B or C.
I'll send you his contact information.
So is there a way that we can have a patio set up then at Kennedy's to be able to?
That's up to the village to decide. Or. I know in the past that the garden wasn't allowed at Kennedy's because of the residential properties in proximity to the cafe.
So exactly what is, what is being requested here is, is my understanding, my happy place is looking to lease? Or, or is Kennedy's Cafe looking to lease land or property in order to expand the liquor license to?
Oh, we don't lease each other.
I understand that, but you carry the liquor license, right, with Kennedy's, right?
You're in line with it, correct.
Okay, and so you guys, my happy place is leasing property to Kennedy's?
Correct.
Cafe?
We've got the whole parking lot there, which extends and gives us space to be able to set up a tent or tables or whatever through the Somerset Market Fest. There's, there's limited space right in Kennedy's and folks who are their friends.
So, and what, what is the legal stance on that then you were saying? Because if they're leasing property, I, I'm just trying to get my head around this, if they're leasing property and they're, they're asking for the liquor license to go with that, that's prohibited?
So that's, thank you, that's the other thing. You are the only person that can use your license or Kennedy's Cafe is the only entity that can use your license. You can't give it to somebody else to use to sell alcohol on their behalf. So it would only be you or Kennedy's able to sell here in line.
Even if Kennedy's has an agreement, okay?
They have statute.
Where they have to amend it?
Point three two, two, um, that's used by another is prohibited.
Right.
You, you, or at least if there's a signed lease agreement, wouldn't that be? That.
You're leasing your parking lot or something.
Yeah, can we, the attorneys, the attorneys blaming it, he might, he'd be able, say what you're saying.
I said, I can look into it to see if they could temporary lease like a section of parking lot that's adjoining. Something like that. But you can't share a license.
So we, we just like, what he's, that, that license is asking to lease additional property to expand his sales onto that property, right?
Yeah.
And would that conflict with his?
He said a lease would help.
Pardon?
Wait, that I know.
Well, his liquor license is written towards his property, right?
Yeah.
But if he leases additional patio towards that property, does that notify his liquor license, I guess my question?
I'm.
Yeah.
I'm.
So, okay, so you'll check in?
Yeah, I can check in a little bit, you know, sometimes places, bars or restaurants will have an event temporarily outside and they'll come in and amend that license premises, that's really the key, that's the license premises on a temporary basis to allow that expansion for that event, basically. I think that's sort of what I'm hearing here. I think I certainly look into that. And you'd have to, if you could send me something that shows the two areas that you're talking about, I'd be hopeful too.
Put something bold on it, do something on your review or something.
Well, I'd be, I'd be willing to make a motion to approve it pending approval by the attorney, but I'm, you know, would you, you? I, I'd be willing to be okay with this if he's okay with it. What, has this went through public safety?
It has not. I'm curious why it has not.
Then, then I'm, I'm gonna back off of that because.
There's my country public safety, I don't know why it's on.
So we should send this to public safety.
Public safety, yes.
I, Brian Chrome, make a motion to send agenda item seven D and new business to safety. I mean, very possible, for discussion possible. Three seconds.
I'll check seconds.
Discussion.
I have just one question, if you guys are, you guys review it and you guys approve it, then it's gotta come back to the board then, right?
Yes.
Or could we, if you guys are okay with approving it, we could, you know, we could condition it on approval of public safety? My question.
It should come back to the board.
Okay.
They need to go to the board yet.
Okay.
All in favor? I, I propose and I will abstain. All right, make a motion to move Eller's presentation up before the minutes.
We actually have another facility assessment. The proposal.
I don't know if we'll get it sent by Eller's.
Yeah. That's different.
Okay, well, move to make a motion to move the presentation, facility, facility and assessment proposals up above the minutes here. It's like.
Sorry.
Discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Yeah. So we.
Which one are we doing?
We're doing the facility, facilities.
Okay, now.
So.
Oh, great.
All that. I didn't show that was something already. Let's do it.
They're the capital projects in under.
Who's up first?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to present tonight. My name is Tanya Pierce with ISG. We've brought a team of ISG team members tonight. We also have some Myron construction team members who are not with us tonight, but also a part of this team. While I get started, my coworker Michael is gonna hand out some materials that we'll be referencing. I lead the Government Cultural Business Group for ISG. I was part of the initial conversations with Bob, what does Somerset have, what do they needing? What's the growth looking like, all the fun stuff that is, goes with the exciting things with growth rate? So with, with that conversation, we pulled in Thad, who is, leads our facility assessment group at ISG. And then Michael is kind of the common thread through all of this. He leads our public works business unit and has been kind of a, will continue to be a continuous resource for the village. So as I mentioned, there's some team members that didn't come with, we didn't feel we needed to totally fill this from up. We've been the size of the floor, so I thought it might be a little bit much to overwhelm you with more, with more team members, but Alyssa Campbell is our architect that is also part of this team. And then we have Nick and Andrew Daniels with Myron that are also part of it. So you'll see on the materials that were just handed out, our full team is on the front page there. Just a quick bit about ISG, we are a five hundred person architectural and engineering firm. We span eleven offices, two of which are in the Twin Cities. That actually came out of our Rochester office and Michael and I are both in the St. Louis Park in Bloomington offices. We're full discipline architecture engineering, environmental planning group and have full suite of services in-house that can tackle projects of this type. We've done a fair number of projects of facility assessment type as well as ground up transition, all the, the whole bit. We also had sent along a proposal which Michael should have also been passed out as well. I know those were distributed electronically a couple of months back, but wanted to get that in front of you as well. I am not the nuts and bolts of what we do, can do, so I'm actually gonna step aside and let Thad jump in with his portion of this presentation.
Thank you, Tanya. Thank you, everyone, for letting us be here and talk to you this evening. As said, I'm Thad, I work with ISG in our Rochester office. We lead the shaporia attachment team, my partner and I, Kevin Hildebrand. And we have a dedicated team that looks at buildings, hold forward municipalities, cities, villages, districts all around the upper Midwest, so I've seen a lot of cool stuff in the years at ISG and look forward to looking at your guys and stuff. Direct you to the second page of Michael's handout there, that first that he said or gave out there, just kind of walks us through the work plan. So we're an architectural engineering firm, we don't do anything without a plan, so. It starts off with a kickoff meeting with the village, so we want to meet the key stakeholders, introduce our team that's gonna be onsite looking at your two buildings, go over milestones, schedules, all that good fun logistics stuff. For the most part though, that, that meeting is making sure that we're aligned with you guys, both with your priorities, what you want to do and where you want to go. Secondly, there leads us into the facility condition assessment, so that's the nuts and bolts of it. That's us deploying a team of architects and engineers looking at your structural, structural things, electrical and mechanical plumbing, all that fun stuff, kind of behind the scenes. You need to know what you have prior to moving forward with a plan, so that's kind of one portion of it, which brings us into the third item there is the space needs planning. So that's where Alyssa Campbell, our lead architect on this project, would come in, meet with key stakeholders. She would see what's working for them, what's working for them in their space, what's not? Is the space too big, is the place too small, is it too hot? That kind of stuff. To do that, we look at, looking at meetings, we can utilize surveys, kind of however the village end users kind of best communicate with us, will be more than flexible for that. Fourth option, or the fourth portion there is our options and redevelopment or redevelopment stuff. This is where it really gets fun, this is where Alyssa puts on her architectural hat and looks at different sites possibly, different concepts of buildings. Maybe it's reusing what you have, maybe it's a small renovation, so it can go from a renovation reuse all the way up to a new building on possibly a new site. So she can walk through that in that phase of it. This is where we like to bring in Myron as well for some cost estimating. We work very closely with their conceptual estimators over there, got good relationships with them and they can really tell us what it's gonna cost, instruct whatever concept we're looking at. Then the final piece there is the final report to you guys, the village, so come back to you guys, show it, show you guys our findings, be more than happy to be in multiple meetings. Obviously, we want feedback leading up to that, that's kind of that sidebar on the side there saying that we're constantly gonna be in communication with you guys, you're not gonna hire us and then three months, there'll be a final report, that's not how we, we work, so that's kind of the overarching of that page there.
Kind of time daily, I'll get it.
So for the facility assessment, we can start as soon as this week, that portion of it, our team.
Start ready to go.
And then probably about that two month timeframe, look at like, and start to finish. So we just wanted on that next page there in your handout is to highlight some recent work we did for the city of Spencer. We also have some hard copies here that Tanya brought, just if you are not comfortable with the QR code, we want something in front of you, otherwise feel free to scan onto your phone and, and learn more about those projects. One thing I wanted to mention that that city of Spencer was basically, this is how we're doing here, it's facility assessment slash spades need analysis. We looked at eleven buildings, everything from their public works to their library, to their police department. And some examples I wanted to share was just, we learned a lot during that talking with the city down there and realizing, you know, what they put pride in and their pride was the equipment that they had. And they, you know, with the cost rising now for new equipment, they wanted to prolong that life of that. And one thing they wanted to do was have wash bays, had no wash bays, they were washing everything outside. So that was. So that was something that is a good example of how we kind of meshed that, listening to the client and then were able to propose wash base in their facilities. The second one we wanted to highlight there was our Clay County Facility Assessment, that four buildings ranging in age from turn of the century all the way up to the 1980s. And we didn't have a lot of data to go off of in some of the older buildings. So we really applied our technology group that came in. We were able to do 3D scans of the buildings and really get down to the minute dimension what we're dealing with. So that's one of the highlight those two and then over to Mike later.
Well, Mr. President, members of the board, I want to thank you on behalf of ISG. As Tanya stated, I have done work with the village in the past and I hope to continue doing that in the future. The ISG has a five first approach. We take a holistic approach. We look at your total needs whenever we do a facility assessment for a community. And we really try to find out what's important to you, but more importantly, we look at why is it important? How is that why gonna impact you five, 10, 15, 25, 50 years down the road? Because this is gonna be a building that's gonna be in your community for a long time to come. So I want to take this time to thank you on behalf of ISG, you look forward to earning your business and we'll open it up for questions, comments, concerns, or curses. Thank you.
Michael, what would be a for a community of size, ballpark price of a, a building that would go for the village hall and public works?
Depends on the size, the size of building, which is kind of first up first is figuring out what your speed points are. If you're gonna take this and exactly build a brand new somewhere else, I know that would be really wise because there's obviously space constraints. So that's not really something we can answer without knowing what size you need, right? So it's costs, of course, right now are all over the map. So that's why we pull, we've more and more pull a construction partner in sooner than later because we want to keep a tight, a tight grip on those from the beginning. So, but we can get as the, as we work through the facilities, that's not the key component of is get those costs out as quickly as soon as possible.
A million, five million, ten million.
Or building the size or building point of date.
If they just put in the two together.
So let's say, brand new construction right now is working $400, $425, $450. So I'll let you do the math. I suck at math. On a renovation, you can, you can wrench it down a little bit depending on what you're renovating. So.
My other question would be for Ellers is, do we have any money and Andrea, we have any money in capital out later? For the future for this?
Not at this time.
Yeah, ca- cash in the bank? No, ability to borrow money? Yes, but then, then you want to know how much it's gonna impact the taxpayers to pay it back. So if, if and when there was numbers to be provided, Josh and I can give you guys what that would look like on a taxpayer, different value homes or business and the community, again, how much that would cost. Has there been any discussions about doing these facility assess, assessments along with the fire hall and with the township at all? Because I know the fire hall is also looking to expand, maybe this could be a shared cost on a venture that we could all go in together on. I don't know, Lenny, you're here, I don't know if that's crazy talk or it is, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, all right, just something I thought I would bring up because I know the fire hall is a need as well. So that's something we could get on one roof potentially.
I guess my concern would be if we spend, you know, this $30.5, $36,000 now on the assessments and then we can't afford it for the next 10 years or whatever, the assessment's gonna be completely.
Well, not necessarily. Some of what we've discovered in that, I think, I think maybe they didn't get into quite the details. We know we're under time constraint. But many cities will come up with is like the list of like, here's the list, you know, in two years, you want to, you need to buy two years, you need to buy five years. Here's a list of musts, like you gotta, you gotta, that's a problem, or you have a wall that's crumbling, like we can shore that up. So you, you kind of work out a plan, right, of how you take care of your facilities to get you down the road. And then, you know, the goal can be in whatever, we're gonna do this or that or whatever that ends up being. But you can, you at least have a better picture of what you're looking at.
Do you guys help with any grant funding or you guys, like, you've become trails for that as far as like you say, hey, we're doing this assessment, this would qualify for that?
Done a number of projects with, yeah, different types of grants, those are available.
Give a whole grant and funding.
A little grant available right now.
There's grants available. It's, it's all timing. Getting the request and then being able to get yourself going to like get it in the ground so that you can meet this, like it's all, it's all timed.
I may have missed this, but what does ISG stand for?
Initially, originally, we were founded in Mancito Minnesota as an engineering firm. So I was originally known as I and S group, or actually INS engineers. And then it became INS engineers and architects and then it became INS group. And then we stopped monkeying it on the bit and it just became ISG. So I is, oh my gosh, I dropped out quickly. Isaacson, thank you, and super not. And Isaacson dropped out early on, super not, had stayed, has stayed on and then they're still super not that ISG. But we are, he's up, we are 100% in place. So all of that is just history of this plan.
Have we ever done a facility needs here, ever? Okay.
And Tanya, you've got another good point. So we start out as an engineering firm, but how we have an architect component. So with a lot of our competitors, you have to outsource that stuff. You don't have to do that with us. We're able to save the community costs.
Is there any other question?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
There is another company.
Yep, yep. I'm gonna make a motion to move.
For the facility assessment, another company.
There are three of them, but I think we only got two.
Okay.
I'm over here. I like both, I like both.
Yeah, she covered.
Teach my children that telephone is the most effective.
I mean, I know, and then whatever works best on the shooters, we have a telephone.
I'm gonna have to. Okay.
It's all, we'll, we'll figure it out. Okay. Give you like a little.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thanks.
Yeah, well done.
What do I have to do? Better way to make it?
Yes, down at the bottom, you can go to the presentation mode. It looks like a little projector. Maybe that's.
Yes. No, no. There you should still go.
I'm fine.
What are your card?
It's done.
We're taking our. We can see it behind you.
Oh, I can't see it on here.
All right. Well, thank you for having us here today to present our qualifications and our approach for the facility assessment and space needs study. We're world architects and engineers. We are, it's gonna be a lot of similarities to what you just heard, but we're a national firm, 300 people or so, about 200 of those are in downtown St. Paul. We are an integrated architecture and engineering firm and we have in-house architects and engineers as well. Our purpose up on screen is to make a difference in the communities we serve. We are entirely focused on public sector clientele. You may know of our firm because we've worked with the school district here in town for a number of years. And just were rehired by them last week, actually. We are committed to working with elected officials and publicly funded entities to make sure that taxpayers' funds are used wisely and invested in long-term facilities for good purposes. Our four, five core values at the bottom really drive what we do every day and really form the basis of our approach. And that's collaborating, listening, inspiring, unique results, most importantly, going above and beyond. We like to always be there, a client for us as a client for life, even if you are working with another firm. So that's a little bit about us.
Thank you very much. Um, so how did that benefit you guys in the village of Somerset? Well, we help municipal planners plan for their future. We can give you the wide spectrum of possibilities, all the way from the do nothing maintenance plan to potentially what some thing might look like on whatever timeframe, whether it's short, five years, 10 years, 20 years out. We can help you get, we can give you that projection and really help you and guide you along the way. So that if you can't make the investment today, we can help figure out how we can prolong your buildings, your equipment and help make it a better facility for your, your staff that are in here. Talking about facilities, we understand the building types. So we know village halls, we understand the departments that are here with PEDs. We have a long history of developing and designing PEDs. And so we understand the security requirements that go with that and just sometimes the, the day-to-day impacts that, that has fire. We look at the health and wellness and kind of the zone approach for contamination to those and public works. We understand how that flows and how the vehicles and equipment kind of flow in for the village. And we understand how an impact, the growth of a community can really impact any of those building facilities. Thank you.
And we know that that benefit is, is real because we've worked with dozens, if not hundreds of municipalities assessing their facilities, helping them plan for the future. And like Alyssa said, whether it's just putting together a maintenance plan or putting together a long-range plan that identifies when you need to add space and what that space is for. This is just a short list of many of the local communities that we've worked with, developing very similar plans. And how are we successful in all those instances? It's because we have a great process. We have developed a process to lead our public sector clients through.
Yeah. I can't see it on here.
So we want to walk it through that. We know that this process works. We know that no process with a public entity isn't gonna work without engagement, without collaboration and without ownership being developed by elected officials, by staff and by the community at large. So that's a very important piece of our approach.
Thank you. So I didn't introduce myself, but I'm Alyssa Stein. I would be helping, I would be helping the village kind of throughout this process. And like Joel said, you know, we really look at communication. It's really one of our keys to success. We know we can't design anything, look at anything without understanding the leadership, without understanding the departments, without understanding the users of the space and how you guys function and operate. So we really have this inclusive collaboration and really the solution is based off of the needs and the goals and what the village of Somerset wants to get out of it. Next slide, please. Thank you. So one of the key strategies that we use is called the four planning rooms. Essentially, it's a way to filter all of the great ideas that you might have from community members, users of the space into one area. So that as a board, we can get you guys the detail, the, you know, anything that you want to see, the data, the reports. And we can filter all of the information from the users community into that kind of one basis, a basic report for you guys. Excellent.
So we do, as I mentioned, have internal architects and engineers, being focused on public sector buildings. We know that you own, operate and fund your own buildings and longevity is important. We know that being cutting edge with brand new systems sometimes isn't in great, the best interest. Having tried and true systems that are durable and long-lasting and a good investment are often the goals that our public sector clients see. So our engineers and our architects know that we walk through buildings, we assess the buildings to that, that level and come up with lists of the maintenance items that are needed in the short, medium, long term. And those also inform, what are the parts of the buildings that are needing most maintenance? And maybe are the first ones that should be considered for a building replacement if you, if there are space needs that are driving additional space. If there's a building that was just invested in by the community, even if that department is growing, even if there are space needs, we know that that's not likely gonna be accepted by the community to tear down that brand new investment. And so maybe looking at ways of reusing that investment and keeping it going long-term. This provides us the, the basis for understanding those existing assets that the village has.
And one of the things also on here, it's not quite laid out, but as we do have in-house engineering, sustainability is a huge part of what we do. And so as part of, as we go through the building, we do kind of look at the sustainability, understand what your goals are for those, maybe things you want to achieve, maybe things you want us to just look at on what that payback might be. And incorporate that into kind of the facility analysis as well or the final report as well.
And since we didn't introduce everyone in the beginning, we do have representatives from Mark and Johnson here. They'd be an important part of that condition assessment that would be offering constructability and costs as part of, you know, our assessment of what the existing conditions of the buildings are, what the repair costs, maintenance costs would be. Thanks.
So one of the other first things that we do besides looking at the buildings is really understand the usage of the, the building that we would be looking at. So this is really spending time with the users, understanding how you function, understanding how you operate, touring the existing facilities and really get an idea of, you know, where you are today, how you operate today. And then usually that brings us into the land from the slide. Thank you.
I think that one of our differentiators is our expertise in the building types. We've worked on so many different municipal buildings across the Midwest that we've seen lots of different ways for communities, government to operate. We can, you know, you're, you're used to operating in this building, in these buildings that you have today. And so we bring to the table an expertise that says, have you ever thought about doing this this way? Have you ever thought about bringing police and fire together as a public safety entity? I know that's not really appropriate here, but just starting to think about all the different elements of operations. You know, we find that we can offer that sort of experience that's done through either virtual tours, actually getting in a van together and driving around and looking at other newer facilities to see how other communities, village halls or police stations are laid out. And, and what they do, how they store evidence, how they respond to fires, how they store their, their snowplows, things like that. And so we really believe that we shouldn't just be replicating what you do now. This is an opportunity as you're laying out the master plan to think towards the future and look at different operations and how that might impact space in the future.
And really how you serve your community too. We are all public entities. They are public entities. And so how does what you guys are looking at and how we're looking at operationally affect the community that you guys are serving? Thank you. So all of that gets kind of, once we understand where you are today, where we want to go operationally, where do we want to go from an ideal setup, if you will? We, we create kind of a program, which is lays out all the square footage of what might be today. We also look at trends of, of what we're seeing, maybe other village halls or other PDs doing and really have those global conversations on, is it needed here? Does it meet what your guys' expectations and goals are for the project? If not, then maybe we don't need it or if it is, okay, how do we get that to be into this plan?
Once we have that basically recipe for, for that master plan buildings of the needs, we can then start assembling those ingredients in different ways, figuring out how we can leverage the existing infrastructure. Sorry, next slide. Looking at the different options and, you know, one of the, one of the key factors is cost. So we know that that's an important piece and. Yeah, it's, it's also our role really is.
Yeah, it's, it's also our role, really, starting from day one, we're there with the facility study to understand what is needed, what's a real cost to it, I guess, if you will. Architects are experts in cost evaluation, maybe, but we'll provide the reality to it. But we'll see it through all the way, by constructability, various cost options, and then make sure that the cost does live through five, ten years down the road as well.
I'd say that you, you do a great job of not only identifying construction costs, but also helping your clients set up for the full project, understanding what furniture, what land costs, what other things are going to go with that as well. And then once those costs are, are determined, you know, and we have a full understanding of all the different options on the table, we do look at, you know, going back to the original core planning group that Melissa talked about, they set up the criteria, they set up what are the objectives, and we figure out which of those options meet those objectives the best. And almost always, we see one option that rises from the top that the whole core group rallies behind and says, this meets all of our objectives the best, and is within the budget that we think is appropriate, so.
And then in the end, we, not end, but the conclusion, I guess, of what our feasibility and master planning would be is a couple of different reports. And so really, we get into, you know, what the type of report is that you guys want to see. Is it a long-term facility for ten years, laying that out? Like I said, there is unfortunately not a zero for do-nothing in the building. There's always constant maintenance. Those who own homes know that very, probably very well. And so we would look at kind of the spectrum of, from the do-nothing option to whatever the outcome of those options might be, and kind of laying that all into one report. So in the end, you have one consistent document that you're looking at that has everything that literally we just talked about in there for the village, and that way, and, you know, if you're doing something now, great, but if you need to wait five years, you can come back to it in five years and say, oh, right, this is what we decided we were going to do for our five-year plan or our ten-year plan. And kind of look at that, the costs, all of that stuff. We also, at this point, kind of talk about public engagement, and so we're not quite sure, you know, if it's, we want to have open houses and get the community involved, and talking about, you know, what the plan is, or coming, you know, to those, maybe we'll talk to you guys about what does that mean from a community standpoint, since these are, you know, public-used buildings in the public, that you guys can serve the public.
We often see that before these gentlemen from Ailer's start talking about tax impacts, it's usually important to share with the community what the current conditions of your facilities are, what the need is, before you start saying what the price tag to fix it is. So, a great strategy. Speaking of price tags, one thing that we want to make sure that you saw in the proposal is that our approach to fees, we know that you have limited budgets. With all of our public sector clients, we like to work for a fixed fee that honestly, it's an average of what we usually see is going to take to do the effort. There are some projects that they take three years to get through, and we go through options A through R or S or T, or whatever it takes. And you can call any one of the clients that we've done studies for. Once we commit to that original fixed fee, we will keep working. Honestly, a lot of our effort is at the very beginning, the data gathering, working through different options. We can keep doing that till our cows come home. And the, so we commit that we will stick with the same fee that until you get the results where you're digging in the ground and are ready to start designing a project, that will will satisfy whatever need you have during the study process.
Kind of time frame, are we talking?
You know, on the average, we usually suggest about a sixteen week. We've done a lot faster. We've done it in four weeks. We, like I said, there are some of my clients that they want to go three years.
I understand that, but I, just general, you know, in your experience, on something like this, start to finish the size of a municipality like we're talking about here.
Yep, about sixteen weeks. And what that does is sets up not only a regular agents meeting with that core group to check in, to make sure we're still following along with the big-picture objectives, but it gives us a couple of touch points with all of the users. So we'll meet with, sit with the village staff here, talk about their needs. We'll check in with them as we finalize those needs, make sure we heard them right. We'll check back in with them on the options and say, here are the options that are developing. And so having that sixteen weeks, usually gives those the opportunity for those couple of different touch points, not only with you, and not the board, but also with the staff who are using the buildings.
One last time. Thank you. So why will we have the expertise? We have an inclusive collaborative process, and we know your community. So thank you, and I'll open it up with questions.
I just got one question. Do you have any, a lot of the experience of the municipalities that you have on this list here are pretty much all in Minnesota. Any in Wisconsin?
Well, you know, I'll speak on our side quickly and then give them, but if you go to Osceola and see the Discovery Center, that's something that our firm was fortunate enough to construct, whole county, we did their highway facility. You go down to Hudson, and then you look at their fire station, their municipal hall, recent improvements, their libraries. You know, we are, we are very well engaged in, in Western Wisconsin.
That's Mark and Johnson.
Yeah.
Gold is intertwined with them?
No, we're just partnering on their, on this particular project, but also a number of projects. Most recently, Gold worked on the study for River Falls. We looked at their police that resulted in the building that put the old River Falls Gazette, and we studied their fire as well. That's a project that hopefully is going to be getting off the ground here in the next couple of years.
They didn't make it on the list that they were counties, but whole county and Ross.
And you guys did the studies or actually built the buildings?
Studies.
Studies, though, because that's what everything is, a different study or master plan, and then, so you guys take care of that part of it, and then turn it over to.
Well, we do a lot of the buildings too, but we only listed the studies because that's what you're, what you're doing.
Yes, yeah.
Out of all the studies that you guys have done, how many do you think have been built?
Built, I'd say seventy-five percent to eighty percent. And the timeframe, not all of them are like right away. There are oftentimes, it's a, a plan that has a building happening about five years later.
And on the, there's three images on that slide. Those were all that came from master plans that we had done, and none of those are new buildings. They're all renovations.
And then you said you have a kind of a fixed price tag. What is that?
Oh, that was in the proposal that we had.
Many.
Oh, I didn't see that. I didn't see that one. Were these, that was in the, twenty-four, twenty-four, about eight minutes for travel.
No, no, that's all in.
Anybody else have any questions?
You have the ability to ask the same question that was asked to the other guys. You have the ability to assist with grant writing and, and stuff like that in, in.
I, I started Mark and Johnson about seven years ago, and prior to that was a recovering city planner, and then did economic development work for XL Energy, the investor in this area. And it worked with a full host of municipalities on a, a variety of grant programs, whether it's, you know, EDA funding through the Regional Planning Commission, whether it's funding through the state of Wisconsin. And there are actually a variety of new programs that have been developed under the current administration that would support the types of endeavors that you're looking at. So, yeah, we have a definite breadth of experience there, and, and we'd definitely be able to help that elders offset some of your, your bonding costs, you know, with some, with some grant funding from a variety.
Good question.
Are you guys going to have a tug-of-war match on?
No, we generally are. All right, never mind.
I would love nothing more than to have this fancy new building here as make sure we can take for it, and that our already high taxes don't help it up anymore, so. We'll put it on these guys to help us figure out how you can afford it and, and what time period that would.
A lot of times, our processes start with, one of our guiding principles is this is the dollar value. We just got done doing a study for Eden Prairie Police, and objective number one was a certain dollar value. Building could not exceed that because that's what they had planned for in their taxes.
And it was in a, it was like three years, three or four years out, so they gave the timeframe and the dollar amount. And so then we make sure our, our options or whatever we're creating meets within that timeframe and that budget.
We have worked with a full host of municipalities, school districts here in Western Wisconsin, and you know, the reality is in every project that we do, there are needs and there are wants. You know, and there are constraints that come through, whether it's revenue caps, whether it's other issues that you're dealing with at the local level. And we know we need to maintain those constraints in order to deliver a project for you that's going to make sense for you and for the taxpayers and the community.
Thank you. Anybody else that need, have any questions?
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to move the three max for the discussion possible for, for planning in two thousand twenty-three capital projects.
While they're here.
Let's go to you. All in favor?
I, I vote.
All right, you guys are up.
H, thank you. Sean, Josh, want us up there or okay to sit here? Whatever works.
Separate mic control.
Talking as a booming voice. Well, so we were at your last meeting where we talked, our coworker Brian Raymer was on the screen, talking about the utility rates. And I know also Chuck talked a little bit about some of the construction costs related for projects that the village is looking at this year. So the next step was what the handout that Josh just provided is focusing in on, if we're moving forward with those projects in 2023, what's going to be the plan to finance them, since you don't have cash in the bank to just pay the bills? It's not a hundred percent for sure. And then also, what will that impact be on the budgets going forward for the village? So we've got a couple of slides here that we'll take you through. Josh and I'll probably go back and forth a little bit, and I'll focus up on the screen too. Can you see this one?
Again.
Okay. What was your name? I, I'm Sean Lentz, and this is Josh Low.
Yeah.
So Andrew, if we can go to the first slide. One of the, you guys had asked a question, Mike, I think it was, with you about regarding the facilities financing. The, one of the obstacles for communities is a lot of times, when you issue debt for a project, what you're using is general obligation debt. Debt backed by the full-fledged credit of the village or your ability to levy taxes. That type of debt is limited under state law to five percent of the equalized value of the whole village. So the line on the top, or the, you can see on the bullet point, their total capacity for Somerset right now is just under seventeen million. So you could issue up to seventeen million in general obligation debt under state law. Okay, right now, as of the beginning of this year, you have two million five hundred and fifty thousand outstanding. That's honestly very good for a community the size of Somerset with a lot of the growth challenges that you have. So that capacity, you certainly have plenty of capacity to look at the projects you're looking at this year and to look at other projects. But the other side of issuing debt, of course, is paying it back, right, just like your mortgage. So Andrew, if we can go to the next slide. This next slide is looking at your principal and interest payments that your general fund is responsible for to pay back the debt that the village has already issued. It's already outstanding. Now, I highlight general fund because as you'll see in some of the slides we've got coming up, when the village does a project, it's pretty uncommon that the only source of revenue you're using to pay that back is the taxes. Usually, you'll be using potentially your utility rates and charges to pay some of it back. You'll be using special taxing districts called taxing increment districts that you have in the village to pay that back. So but what I think mostly the public sees front and center is the tat, what's the impact on my property taxes, okay? So right now, for you guys, this year, 2023, you're levying about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to pay that debt back, and that's the principal and interest, and that's what's levied over the, the tax base. The total debt service for you, so when Andrea has to pay all the debt payments throughout the year using general obligation debt, that's about three hundred and six thousand dollars. And the difference between the three hundred and six and the hundred and thirty, that's debt being paid by other funding sources of the village, not the levy. Okay. The other thing I would mention to you guys right now, you look at the third bullet, your levy for this year and your entire levy. So this is to cover your operating expenses, salaries, wages, keeping the buildings open, everything. It's about a hundred, one point nine million.
That included one thirty-seven four for debt, debt levy?
It does. And the point, thanks for the segue, the point I wanted to make is that debt levy then is only seven percent, and I say only. Josh and I have the pleasure of working with a lot of communities. That's a low number. So your debt as a percentage of your total levy is very low compared to other communities. My sense is, and I think this might be why you're having the facility discussion, you're coming up with pressures from growth, older facilities. You're probably going to have to invest. So my sense is, in coming years, that percentage is probably going to rise, and it's not uncommon in growing communities that it does rise. The other reason we see it rise is, and I think you're probably all aware of this as well, you're under levy limits. And one of the very few things that you can do that's outside of levy limits to finance projects is the issuance of general obligation debt. It's one of the very few things that does not count against your levy limits.
So in other municipalities, you're saying we're substantially low as far as our obligation, a, a, a percentage of our debt levy to our total bills, right, our total taxes, and what you're saying is about seven percent. So in other municipalities, what's the, the spectrum here? Where are we at the high and the low end?
We see some that get up to forty percent, but they're usually very rapidly growing communities that are having to do a lot of infrastructure. That's not very high-end. I'd say more in the twenty, twenty-five percent, some in the, you know, that, that's where we see most communities. Once they stabilize somewhere in that twenty to twenty-five percent.
So another measurement of your debt is this row here on the column, this axis here on the right, right? So this is your mill rate. So what this means is the amount of debt you have is divided by a thousand dollars in value to the community. Value Somerset right now is about three hundred and thirty million or something like that. So your mill rate right now is about point four, and it kind of scales down a little bit as we pace them to set off and goes down to point three. I'll tell you that your most communities that we work with are all above one, right? So about two and a half times where you are now. And again, that's relative to the size and the value of the community. So, you know, if you took down every house and doubled it in value, right, your lower rate would go down. Even though you have the same amount of streets, same amount of facilities, same amount of municipal services you're trying to offer, right? So it depends on the wealth of the community, but given that as a measurement, you have much less debt relative to your value than most other communities.
That sounds great, but where are taxes located?
I don't think so.
Well, it's, it's, you know, one thing that might be good, I don't know if you, maybe you guys have already done this, is two things to think about. When you think about taxes, the village is a portion of it. So you got to really look at village, county, school district, tech college. One thing we can do, we got a lot of data on this, we could look at how you guys compare just village and also all taxes to surrounding communities, and that might give you a real good handle. Yeah, and, and, and it's, it's, what's that?
We're low.
Yeah, I think on a relative basis, comparing you to others, you'll be on the lower end, you know, you prepare yourself for towns. Villages-wise, prepare yourself to towns which don't offer the same services that you guys do. Probably you're, you're a little bit higher than, but I think it might help kind of give you, before you get into some of these big questions you guys are going to be answering probably in the near future, it's a good place to kind of understand where you sit.
There's lots of benchmarks in this kind of stuff, so we can combine like varieties. You can see on this, it says one thing, and this says another. So to really help you get the whole picture, you know, I think Sean mentioned just the village side, but then the people who you actually listen to or tap bears, probably don't always understand that, well, there's a school district portion that you don't have control over. There's a county portion that just did a ninety-million-dollar new building last year in St. Croix County. That's not something you have control over in this building. So these are good for you to just have your own perspective, but also use as a communication tool when people pop in here in the supermarket or on the street or wherever.
Could you explain the first two? The village that levy at a hundred and thirty thousand, and then the total debt service? Can you explain that?
You bet.
But so the, when we say the total debt service. That is, you, you have a number of general obligation debt issues you issued and are outstanding already for various capital projects that you.
Two point five million, right?
Yes, that's the outstanding principal, right? So each year Andrea gets invoices from bad debt. Pay us. The total payment is a hu- is three hundred and six thousand for those issues. The difference between the three hundred and six thousand and the hundred and thirty is the three hundred and six thousand is the amount that's paid by all kinds of different funding sources. In the village. So your utilities pay a portion of that three hundred and six thousand. Tax increment districts or special taxing districts in the village, they pay a portion of that three hundred and six thousand. The portion that's on your property taxes, so that the people see when they've got their property bill, property tax bill. That's a hundred and thirty thousand of the three hundred and six.
By all the taxpayers? That's divided up by all the taxpayers?
That hundred and thirty thousand. Right, the hundred and thirty thousand is a part of the one point nine million in total taxes that the village is charging the public. And so when they see their tax bill, it's taking the one point nine million and dividing it over all the, the property in the village. And the hundred and thirty thousand is a portion of that one point nine million.
Because I noticed that that number is going down over the next seven years, so is that, is that because it's projected to go down?
No, that, those payments are locked in, but what this chart doesn't show, and we will get here in a second, is new debt. So the projects you're looking at this year.
So this is existing debt and this is how to pay the existing debt, this chart right here, right? Okay, so we got a seven year obligation right here.
It, it's more than one obligation, but that's the total.
Yeah.
Of, of all those obligations.
Right, just for, just for the, the, the taxpayer portion.
Correct.
Yep. Not encompassing any new, new debt.
No new debt on here yet.
Right.
That's coming up.
That's coming up.
Yeah. Okay, Josh, want to do that? Yeah, so what we have here on the next slide. I'll keep giving you those little ideas. These are the capital projects that we've been asked to take a look at financing for two thousand twenty-three. So we've got the columns here that represent each project name, which we're trying to do. And then the rows across show the amounts attributed to each fund that it would give you, go back to. So this is a great question of like how this gets split up, the difference between the total debt service and then specifically the tax levy portion, right? So if we finance all of these projects, just looking at the column, the total says on the right. The ones under street levy, that would be one that's paid back by property taxes. The water sewer, tax increment district number three and tax increment district number five, those portions would be paid by those funds, not by property taxes. And you have to put it on the tax level, right? So the way we have it broken out, we always want to be able to attribute which portion of the street project, because you're going to be digging up, doing utilities and retrofitting that as well. How much of each one of those projects is, should be due by each one of those funds, so it doesn't all fall on the village taxpayers, okay?
But it does, it's rate bayers, you guys understand that it's taxes. Property tax payment, water utility, water, water utility, we're charting users, sewer utility users.
So usually that's, for most folks, that's probably the same person. But it gets attributed through a different fund, so when I pay my water bill, that pays for the water portion or maybe just a water project. But if you had, if you had to paint a water tower, that's going to be a standalone water project. If you dug up a street and did utilities work in that street, you're going to have a combination in that one project, probably the streets, which can't pay by the levy. And then water and sewer and then it'll get split. Okay. A lot of this will make sense as we move through the deck and you can see kind of like in the real examples that we're using for this, how this kind of gets mapped out across all of those different funds.
So what you're saying is five million at the end? Five point one million?
That's right.
Total debt, total debt obligations.
That's right. Uh, yeah, go ahead. A main street bridge, there's money in the bridge fund, that's six hundred and fifty-two thousand. That would be a cash contribution that comes from that fund to pay for that project specifically.
Or, but what I, I was going to say is only a hundred and sixty-five is really on, on the levy, right?
That and the storm portion.
And the steward, okay, so the forty thousand?
Yep.
Yeah, and, and I think, yeah, so the column there was this two thousand three street improvement, spring street and main street improvements, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand. And then next to it, it's the two hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Those can be paid by TID number three, which is your downtown tax increment district, based on that.
What's that? If you got the cash.
Exactly, so our projection is the two hundred, the two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, the TID will be able to pay for that. But we're projecting, we're, we're anticipating that seven sixty-eight and that's what the rest of the slides are going to show. That's going to have to be a levy. Uh, payment, because I don't think there's going to be enough revenue coming out of TID three to, to pay that. It's too late in the life of the, the district to cover all.
Well, that's what we talked about when, when we read district.
This is a new project, this is a new project that was not on the list that we put on in, and we did that because I remember you asked that question.
Yeah, because we had, we're looking at one point five million that needed to happen in developments in order to get to a, a positive cash flow within the next two years. Before it could close or TID could stop with any more, any additional monies going into that, right?
Well, so we used the four fifty, I think, from, for the property acquisition that was part of it. Then it's the two sixty-eight in this. Actually, it'd be good if we just went to the next, we'll, we'll get to that slide, so you totally read my mind, we'll get to TID three in a few minutes. So this is, if, this next slide that you're seeing right here, and then it's in your packet, is if we had to borrow for that full amount that we showed on the previous slide. Right, so the total principal and interest payment, we got it here in purple, would be about seven million when you add in the principal plus the interest. The annual debt service at the total bill, we talked about that total debt service in the first year twenty twenty-four. That's if we issue, issue the debt in this year, you always have the first payment following year. The total principal and interest payment would be three seventy-four. And then as you move into the columns over to the right, you can see how it breaks down for each specific funding source that we talked about back in the previous page. As Sean mentioned, we've got this one from the second from the left, TID three slash levy. That kind of implies that if we get money from TID three, it can pay that. If we don't, we should anticipate it to be on the levy. So if we get more development than we thought was going to occur when we did the project plan a while ago, that can help pay for some of those costs and it doesn't have to show up on the levy. So it's a TID three eligible cost, doesn't mean that it always is going to have enough sufficient funds for development to pay it. But once it's in a project plan, it means it's eligible to be paid as a TID funding source.
So we'd be borrowing money to pay it on monies in TID three, right?
Well, it's a village project, right? So it's there, but it is within that district. So it's not, this one is not for new development that is preferring, it's refurbished streets that are within TID three.
Right.
So this is not planned like, it's not like there was a vacant site open for.
So we have, we have the option, we don't, we don't have to say, okay, TID three, we have to use TID three monies. We can actually levy for projects within TID three.
Sure, that's totally up to your discretion, but the ten dollars that are there, this was the things that they were intended to be used for. So if you have them, the reason you use them is so you don't have to levy for it, you don't have to go to taxpayers to ask them to increase their taxes for it. So that's why you do it, unless you have other projects that, you know, you kind of have earmarked for that. But that's why long-term forecasting, this is something that we do in our annual meetings that we have that go over the. The tax increment districts are helpful because it gives you that forward view to say, here's where we are now, here are all the things we want to do, here's how much cash we have. You know, what's the best way to leverage all of those resources?
But the seven sixty-eight that you were talking about, that's in TID three, that's got, you're thinking that's going to have to be a levy for that project, right?
Yes, most likely, yeah.
And what's that, that's just the, the street improvements or does that include the intersection or is that all of that?
So on page four, the handout, you have the one that.
Right, I, it says, it says improvements, but it doesn't say.
Turn lane is the only part that TID three would be able to come in.
That's based on the projections right now. That was the one that we put into the project plan, the right turn lane. But they're all street improvements, they're all eligible. But that was the one we talked about specifically.
So. We see some understanding, it's right, so if you do a levy for TID three or that other. The improvements, that's every business that's already in the TID three district would get taxed? Or how does that?
It's everything. Everything outside of the tax increment district.
Everything outside of TID three.
Yep. So TID, where you see TID three and TID five. Those are being paid for by the properties in the tax increment districts. Where you see levy and TID three levy, we're assuming that the TID three does not have enough money to charge, so we're charging all of that to the levy. So that the, the, the numbers in green would impact the village debt levy. The bluish, uh, TID three, orangish, TID five, lighter blue water and kind of reddish, brick red sewer utility.
And so all. Maybe Sean, you can highlight this too. Uh, whether you're in a TID or not in a TID, you pay your taxes regardless, they'll go into the fund. So even though when the village collects them, they kind of put them in, in buckets, there isn't really a difference to an individual taxpayer. There's no advantage to being in or outside of them, but outside of the TID, they're all village taxpayers, they all get taxed by the same rates too. Being in a TID or outside of a TID, or whether you have them or don't have them, they're still the same rates. Uh, it's just, it's more of like an accounting feature than it is for a specific person.
With the levy to be people outside that TID three district.
In simplest terms, that's the best way to, to understand.
Increase in taxes and.
Unless there's value created in the TID to cover the costs.
Yeah, so we have a slide here in a few seconds on TID three cash flow and TID five, so we can talk a little more specifically, I think, about the questions that you're, you're, you're asking, you're probing on.
All right, so we can flip to the next slide, and this is going to show the projected levy, we're just adding those two green columns, right? The, the two projects we were just talking about to hit the ledge, okay? So this is kind of, this shows the impact of just the new debt, those two columns that we added on top of it. Along with the existing debt that we had a couple of slides ago, right? So since as we noted previously, you guys do not have a lot of debt relative to a lot of other communities. You have not been a frequent issuer, I think the last thing we did for you was at the end of two thousand twenty-one, a few hundred thousand. Uh, except for the, say, drinking water last year. Yeah, so the last levy related project was in two thousand twenty-one for just a few hundred thousand.
Was that for the water tank? Water.
Wait, wait. So when you take the two projected payments from the levy pieces that we just looked at on the last page, your levy increases from a hundred and thirty thousand this year. To one ninety-seven in two thousand twenty-four. And again, that included the Churchill Road Project, Parent Street and Stormwater and then Spring Street, uh, Spring Main Project we just talked about, in addition to some, uh, Stormwater. So it looks like it's a pretty big increase because relative to the past, since you have not had a lot of debt, even if you add a little bit more. It's going to look like that pretty sizable increase, right? So when you go from a small base and add some, it looks like a percentage wise, that's a pretty big change, right? And again, this assumes that TID three can fund the right turn lane portion. And all these other funding sources can cover their own piece of that, you don't have to levy for that. So we're looking at that, uh, the process that we just talked about on the previous page, being on this levy, okay? So again, this focuses only on the debt and the debt you have currently from what we're talking about adding to the levy. Yep. So after looking at that, only the debt, we wanted to kind of put that into perspective of the village's entire budget, right? So, uh, you know, we talked a minute ago about the total obligation of the village every year in your budget being one point nine million, right? Compare that to what we talked about, your debt on the previous page, going up to next year of two hundred thousand. So what you have here graphically is your operating is in red, that's a one point nine million. Your existing debt is in green and then what the new debt is, is in the blue. So what I wanted to kind of show is contrast that to the previous slide where it looks like you're having this huge increase in your costs. Which is not insignificant, but relative to everything that you have to deal with, it's a pretty small portion of that when you take into account. Everything else that takes to operate village, okay? So in two thousand twenty-four, the levy increases up to one point nine seven million from the one point nine one right now. The percentage of your total levy or debt, Sean mentioned a while ago, at seven percent, now goes up to ten percent. So it's about a three percent increase, which is why it looked like it's about half. But when you come, compare it to the entire operating levy, it goes from seven percent to a three percent increase.
So I back up one, one, uh, on page six. Coming back there, it's, it's showing, um, the levy increases from one thirty in two thousand twenty-three to one ninety-seven twenty-four, which is sixty-seven thousand increase, right?
Right.
On the general obligation levy. And it only shows that for a, a period of seven years. We're borrowing. We're borrowing the seven, that's us making the assumption that we're going to be borrowing or levying the seven sixty-eight?
Seven sixty-eight.
Yeah, that's, that's the project that you were talking about.
So you're borrowing that for twenty years and the reason it looks like seven is because you're stacking it on top of the existing debt? And once the existing debt goes away, then it drops back in.
That's what I'm asking, so in, in, in seven years, that debt is paid for?
The existing debt.
Right. And then we drop back down, that is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Because then you're just covering the debt that we're borrowing because the existing debt's gone.
Right, right.
Right.
What that doesn't show though is any future bars between now and twenty thirty.
Understand, well, we, we can't address that because we, we don't have it.
Right, right. But as we know, there will be.
Yeah. Yeah, so kind of go back to the discussion you guys had before we started. If Andrea and Bob were to call us up and say, we just got some numbers from the facilities management people, they say. If we do a new village hall, it's going to be this much.
A million dollars.
Yeah, we could take this model, add that in and give you an idea where you'd end up with that on you.
Well, right now, then we're just talking about is the seven hundred and something that we need to deal with in TID three, right?
Just the fifteen projects.
Yeah, just the projects that, uh, the village has on stock it for two thousand twenty-three.
Right. Yep.
Nothing going forward.
Nothing going forward, nothing going forward.
We wanted to do a building and say it was. Uh, Paul, you're saying it'll be ten plus million dollars. Oh, what's the best way for us as a village to be able to handle that someday?
Yeah, in an ideal world, if you can time a new bar, a big project at time where your debt's falling, that's good, okay? For you guys, I think it's going to be a combination of, uh, growing tax base. And maybe we start running some projections, you know, if the village continues to grow, here's how much larger the tax base is. So if we decided to go forward with a ten million dollar project, we're spreading that ten million over. Not just the existing tax base of the village, but now a growing tax base, what does that impact look like? So I think from a number standpoint, we can run some different scenarios, it's projections though, how much is the tax base going to grow? You know, we can give you some ideas under different assumptions, what that would, what that would look like. But kind of getting that sense to, if, if that's what you're asking, that's what you want to start seeing those options so you can react to that and get to a point. You know, maybe ten million's too much, we got to be lower if we really want to move forward with this project because the tax impact is just not acceptable to us.
Let's say, so in twenty thirty-one, when the old debt goes off, if we wanted to try to. Construct a building starting then, how much in capital outlay should we start putting inside a year? So.
Sean's going to get his calculator.
Yeah.
Really helpful, but I, I will tell you that jump that, you know, you've got going up there. The increase from the blue, that was from like what, uh, two hundred thousand? Uh, that was about like a million dollars worth of projects, finance over twenty years, so you can see what that bar does. Uh, you know, ten million dollars is going to be a much different looking graph than what we got there.
Yeah, so ten million dollars, uh, twenty years at four and a half percent is seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, that's, it should have been every year.
No, not diamond bar.
So you're, I mean, you're, right now, you guys are paying about a hundred and thirty thousand a year in debt by levy.
Seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Yep. Yep.
So how much now can we start putting away in capital outlay and not?
Well, here's your other, yeah, here's your other problem, because we have levy limits in Wisconsin. I think, Andrew, you guys have some portion of your budget that is in a contingency, right? But it's not that much, so good financial practice would be exactly what you're talking about. Levy some extra dollars in your budget, set aside so we can pick cash for, you can't do it. Because levy, levying extra cash and setting aside counts against your levy limit, the only way you could do it is to cut somewhere else. Put that money away for that purpose. So that's where it gets real tricky now, I think Andrea could probably show, we have some contingency, maybe there's some dollars. But it probably isn't going to be a meaningful amount. Uh, and the truth is, what we see in Wisconsin is almost, uh, all capital projects can't get grants, you have to borrow for it. It's the only way to pay for it under the levy limits, is that geo debt is the only thing. That's outside.
Expansions. What about growth? You know, you said aside growth, impact fees, stuff like that, you know?
Yes.
Those aren't, those aren't governed under, under your uh, you know, uh your, your, your uh levy limits.
If you have an impact fee uh that new development has to pay in, that is good, that's, and I think within the past, you guys have had impact.
Well, you got impact fee, we're looking to revisit that, that whole schedule, how that's all we know, but I'm saying, there's an opportunity for.
There is an opportunity.
Uh tapping in 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 setting that money aside for dependencies or whatnot. And you're doing thirty, thirty to fifty homes a year, you know, and you're you're putting. Maybe five hundred of that away, that's twenty five grand on fifty home.
Yeah, and I think that's why you've been able to keep your debt levy so low for so long, is because you've been able to use that for. Projects being more proactive about it. A lot of communities don't have that kind of flexibility. Uh so if you're doing, you know, some street improvements here and there, pay for new vehicles, that kind of undercurrents are really handy. Um it's gonna be tough to make a meaningful debt in a ten million dollar legacy project, though, which, you know, those things only come up every twenty to fifteen years to do those kind of things. Uh but what you're talking about is completely the right way to think of it. Stock away as much as you can for that. But you know, if if you issued in five years from now, a ten million dollar project, you're able to save two hundred and fifty thousand a year. You know, you just, you know, a million dollars off of the ten million dollar budget would be pretty substantial, and then you still have to find financing for that million. Right.
It's less than we raised the tax fees.
And and the other thing I'm starting to hear more, we're starting to hear more communities are frustrated by that point that you can't put money away. Uh you can do a referendum and ask the public, this is what we wanna do. We want to add an extra hundred thousand a year to our levy. Putting money away so we can borrow less when we have to do a capital project to build that up. I'm not seeing a lot of people to the point yet where they're actually moving forward with that, but it is an option. Referendums are another option to. Add that to your levy and be putting those dollars away, but within the existing levy limit rules without getting authorization through a referendum. It's it's really tough right now to do it.
If we're to put, say, five hundred thousand dollars into a levy every year. With the the number of home taxes or homes that we've taxed, what would that increase be like for a hundred thousand?
What'd you say there?
Well, you're you're uh you're at a levy of one point nine million now. So if I do a five hundred thousand uh divided by one point nine million. That's a twenty six percent increase, so.
Portion of it, so.
Correct.
But how much for a hundred thousand? For your residential home, what does that be?
Yeah, we have to.
And that's like twenty five percent of our actual debt or tax levy. That's that's cutting a major portion of your budget. For your operating to go into this fund. That it would be very difficult to put that much money away every year, unless you cut a whole department.
Yeah, we we can run that, you know, and give you an idea what that impact would be on a household. Uh you know, a hundred, a hundred thousand dollar, three hundred thousand dollar, whatever the different uh household would be, give you an idea. But I I think as Andrew said, in in today's current situation, to get the whole five hundred without doing a referendum, requesting it. It would have a substantial impact on.
So that's what you say, we could do a referendum for the next ten years or something, right?
You you could, yeah, you could do a referendum, asking the public to put X amount of dollars away per year. For the purposes of facilities or village hall. I and Paul, you know probably more of the the rules on referendums, but.
Uh you see some lightly, they try to do it for police and operation expenses, and the majority of them got shot down.
Yeah, I think go clary I wanted to do that.
I highly know we're gonna be talking referendum eight times in the order, just thinking.
We're on, hey, reality, jump forward.
It's a great conversation. That's the one, that's one.
All right, uh one one side, before we start the tid, is everyone familiar with these are? I I thought, uh cause I know you had turnover and the board, some of these tax, sometimes these tax increment districts are a mystery to people. They don't really. Understand what we're talking about. I I I it's not gonna be ashamed of by any means, but i- if it would be worth Josh and I spend a second, just tell you what. A tip district did, we're happy to do that.
We just re, we just redid, right?
Yes.
Okay, but tid five has been. Tid five, tid five was closed, right? And we started in tid six? All right. Okay, and so we closed tid four and started tid six, right? In the process.
They're close to one.
Two, two of those, right? And two we, and we paid off the other ones with that money. Who is, okay, and now we're closing. Four and opening six. So right now, we got one, three and six, or potentially six.
Three, four.
Three, three, five, three, five and six. Four is gonna go away.
Oh, I really got you, good dude.
So, yeah, so these, these districts are special taxing districts in the village. And what's unique about them is. When a building is constructed in a tax increment district, let's say the building has a million dollars in value. Because it's in the tip, instead of new taxes on that million going to all the taxing jurisdictions, they only go to the village. So what that means is the village is collecting the village's share, the county's share, the tech college shares, and the school district's share. Of taxes on a new building constructed in the geographic area of the tip. You can't use that money as a village, though, for anything you want. It's restricted to use to pay back expenses associated with trying to promote development in that tax increment district. So maybe we talk about tid three specifically. With that as a background.
So these are our our cash flows that we always share. Uh but since a lot of folks are new, it'd be really helpful to walk it through. Uh we basically read these from left to right. So on the left hand side is kind of where we show our revenues. In this column, it says new valuation. That's when like a specific year, specific values created, constructed and. And and what's shown there is the year where it actually arrives. So the way property taxes work. Is that in the first year, let's say in twenty twenty three, something gets constructed. It gets valued in year twenty twenty four, and the first time you see new dollars is in twenty twenty five. So it's shown here is that year that you get the dollars, the revenue year, right? So current, and then after that. We'll get all our revenues together. In the case of tid three, you've got some additional revenues that you're able to bring in and use from tid two. And then we've got your expenditures, and then finally your balance, and how much is in your second account for the district, okay? So for the year twenty uh currently, let's start right now in twenty twenty three, the current increment value. Which is how much new growth has happened in the district since it was born, right? That value is two hundred and fifty nine thousand. Uh your current tax rate, this village is sixteen dollars and eighty nine cents per thousand. And that's every jurisdiction. That's not just the village's share, that's tax, school, county, technology, every brand. So when you multiply that by the value, what's currently coming in is not a whole lot. Uh four thousand three hundred and seventy seven dollars coming into tid three. It's not a lot of revenue to three. It's the downtown, right? It's hard to build new stuff. Uh in downtown, because it's already built out, right? So to make this district pencil and cash flow, we've been taking dollars into two. This is the way it's been set up for a long time. To two is now gone, so you can't take any new dollars from that. By the way, this is the district that we just amended a couple of months ago, right? Recently, we authorized that property tax, uh excuse me, that property acquisition for four hundred and fifty thousand. And that was paid for by mostly existing cash in the district.
In tid three district or to transfer from tid two?
Well, it goes from two into three and then three pays.
Okay, so so basically there was a transfer from two to three, and then there was enough cash in there to pay that off.
You got it, you got it. Yeah, and if you wouldn't have done the amendment, and you didn't put that property in a tip. It would become much, you wouldn't, then you wouldn't have the money. You'd have to pay for it from another source.
So that's where we. When we add in that two hundred and sixty eight thousand dollar portion from the debt issue that we talked about a few slides ago. And we lay that in here in this column in blue, you can see that that's an additional expense. And then moving on to these columns in the right, annual balance, it's kind of where you see. What the balance is at the end of every year, when you take in that year's revenue and expenses. So when we look at the year twenty twenty four, the first year that these payments would be due. You start to go into the negative, because there isn't enough revenue anymore, because no new growth has been added to the district, and you're no longer getting the transfers from tid two. So if you put that, put that one in there, the project costs are a little bit higher now than they were a few months ago, when we met. So you're running, you would start to run annual deficits. Um the way to balance that out is to propose to approve, which is what we talked about a few months ago. And the first time we show that is for a new valuation on that empty parcel just to the north, at about two million. And then the ones across the street are another one million, and we've got these space out over a couple of years, and we think that that was still a reasonable assumption. To do that amount of growth in those sites in the future. But again, these are projections. We don't have developers agreements coming through yet. The other thing I'd say is that, you know, these were not, we didn't authorize those projects related to growth. Their obligations of the village, because you own that street, you want it to be fixed up and have the right turn lane there. So if you believe in those projects, you want to use the tax increment district dollars as much as you can, so you don't have to levy for them. But if you wind up having to levy for them, they're, these are typical. Uh municipal projects, right? These are kind of the base core of what you do as community. Those things need to be done eventually, so. These aren't like speculative development decisions that you took major risks on, and now you need development. To occur to meet those obligations. These are things that you would have to be doing anyway.
Yeah, if if we want the tip to pay for, we need development on that lot and those lots, which are really the primary vacant lots. That are are still available in the tax increment district, so. I don't know how much uh activity there is, Bob, on those these days, but that's, that's the goal, is to. Increase that tax value into three, increase then the the revenue, and then be able to pay for the two hundred and sixty eight thousand. Now, if the numbers were substantially better, or you know, if there's a certain type of building that has a higher value. Maybe that seven hundred and sixty eight thousand could be charged a portion of it to tid three as well. But we're not counting on that right now, since we need about three million in value to cover the two hundred and sixty eight thousand dollar project.
For the four hundred and sixty thousand, that was for the purchase of the corner lot, and then about the ten thousand admin expenses. What was the ten thousand admin?
That was for us to do the amendment. I think, yeah, the amendment and some legal costs associated with buying the property, and then each year. You also do some auditing costs with the tid that you charge to the district as well. Those are costs that. Uh I think is, those costs are recurring, right, every year?
And and that's assuming the village is getting a hundred percent of that increment. You're not sharing that with developer.
Right. Yeah, if if uh, yeah, Paul's right, if so, if somebody on the corner came in and said, willing to build a building. But I'm gonna need an incentive to do it, then some of that incentive money would would, if you were willing to to contribute that money. Would come out of here and it would be there to pay for the two hundred and sixty eight dollars, so. All that needs to be taken into account when you were to sit down with somebody and talk about uh. You talk about a negotiation now, because you guys own all that land, I think, right, Bob, that all these lots are owned by the village. The other negotiating tool you have is the price of the property. This, this is not assuming you guys make any money on a sale. This is just assuming you give it away. And you know, so that's a possibility too, is you could get revenue from sale of property. It's all a matter of. What does it take to attract people to develop on those sites and create that additional tax value uh in the in the tax increment district?
One question, uh so. Say the developer uh comes in and everything falls according to the the far left. Uh the the far left uh uh scenario. Now, we've already had general obligation bonds for a street project that we're paying interest on. And trying to pay down that debt, right?
Yeah.
Is there any of that money that's in that projected tax in? Three income that can go towards offsetting that and getting that uh paid down faster and or. Uh you know, relieving the the tax burden from the levy?
The seven hundred and sixty eight thousand?
Right.
We don't have any of that charged right now in here.
I I I understand it, but you're getting revenue now. You're projecting revenue to come in twenty 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 six roughly, right?
Yep.
So. Right now, we got a sixty seven thousand dollar increase, because we've already borrowed. And we got a general allegation of additional sixty seven thousand and general allegation bond that we borrowed for, right?
Yep.
Now, we got this development going down. Is there any of that thirty thousand that can go towards that sixty seven to offset that from that tid? That tid monies?
No, the the three million in new value that is projected on this uh hypothetical forecast is, because we don't have anything guaranteed right now. That is needed to pay the two hundred and sixty eight thousand for the right turn lane. So that that, you see the column in light blue there, uh two thousand three geo bucks, four point six million.
Yeah.
That is, in blue, that's the principal and interest payments to pay for the right turn lane, right? Chuck is the, that's the project intersection. So that, we need three million in additional value to pay that. We'd need more than three million to pay what you're talking about. So we need, we need to create more than three million value, and that's why we didn't want to.
Projecting to get three million dollars in order to offset uh the uh two hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars, is that what you?
Plus interest.
And the reason for that, you need that much revenue, uh new value to come through to pay that relatively small amount, is because you have so many. So few years to actually collect that, then by the time you get it through twenty twenty six. Uh since your tax rate is pretty low, uh you've only got seven more years to collect that, rather than like a full twenty for a new tax increment district.
This tid's been around for a long time. There's a finite, now we could. Extend this tid another three years through an amendment process, if you wanted to, but we didn't put that in there at this point. We we usually, community would wait, kind of see how things are going. Before making that decision. The overlord, you would do many options, but that that is a possibility here.
Saying that tid three was gonna pay for the right turn lane of two hundred and seventy eight thousand is assuming that. Three million dollars in new valuation coming in.
That's a very good way to look at it, yeah.
Right now, we're at uh under four thousand, and it's gonna be negative thirty thousand next year.
That's right, because you don't have any development. Yeah, yeah, if we don't, and, yes, correct, if we don't get any. Increase in value. Starting in twenty four, and we, Josh and I have been talking about, do we really want to charge it thirty thousand a year? Do we want to give it a couple of years? Charge only interest the first couple of years on that debt, and then pay principal and interest. Uh that might be a possibility to not have that bigger deficit right away, but part of it really depends on how the. Village as a whole and how Bob feels about the development potentials there. How, we're showing that we get a project starting in uh. Uh next year in twenty four constructed, and we start seeing revenue in twenty six. Does that seem reasonable, or is it gonna take longer than that? And then also that question of, are we gonna be able to sell the land, or are we gonna have to give it away? You know, all those kind of play into. Making a decision about how quick to repay this debt that's charged to tid number three.
And the other thing is, and if it, the tid can't pay it, then it becomes a levy, or find some other source of the village to pay it. Uh so that's one, if you wanted to go ahead and do it, so. Um once you take out the debt and officially go ahead and do that project, do a solicit bid and secure financing, then you're obligated to do it. Until that time happens. You know, you can choose to park it wherever you want to park it, right? So. This is obviously just a projection right now, assuming you wanted to do that project. If you're very skeptical about the value coming out of those districts, right? You you don't think that any of that growth is gonna happen. You don't have to do any of the projects. That's not what's happening today.
Well, I think we've we've committed to it, not really, is already.
Well, forget everything I just said.
Yeah, so it's like Josh.
So, uh year twenty twenty six, new value, valuation of two million. Why does the cumulative balance not change by that?
Uh because once that comes in, we were able to meet the, so if you look at the, where the projected tax increment column goes from four thousand to thirty thousand. In that, in that year, you still have to pay the thirty thousand a year on the debt payment. So it isn't until the second million development occurs, that then you can start paying yourself back, and it ends up in a. Positive cumulative balance of twenty nine thousand at the end. So you need, you need the two million to cover the thirty thousand a year, then you need another million. To be able to pay yourself back for the the stuff you covered in the early years. To be able to pay yourself back for the, the stuff you covered in the early years. The shirt falls recovering early.
That's very common.
And, and the other approach, I mean, if you guys are feeling like, you know what, we've looked at these lots and we further bacon. We like that we have open space in the, I mean, I'm just throwing that out there. What we want to do is take this thirty thousand a year and move it into the levy. Because you might as well just start paying for it. If you don't think anything's gonna happen out there. That would be the other funding source for this would be the, the levy instead of the TID. But. If you get development there, the TID, because of the amendment work you did, you can charge it to the TID. You might as well do it, take advantage of it. It's really a question of, uh, the, the development potential, how you guys are feeling about. Getting development there and potentially selling those lots as another way to get revenue.
So two five, read this the same way as you did the previous districts, um, left to right. New revenue comes in, multiplied by tax rate, and then we've got expenses over on the right. Uh, TID five is a relatively new district, you know, we only started it in twenty twenty, so. But hopefully you will. That's the point of a new district, right? You want to be able to put that in so you can attract new development, right? So there is no value in right now. Nothing's been built up there just yet. The numbers that you see there in green for that new value, those are all the numbers that we had in the version of project plan, those future looking estimates for a potential build out. Of that site once it starts to come alive. So we don't have anything in there until this is the first year of construction. Uh, and the first estimate we have is three million to be built this year. Uh, and again, this is from projections from three years ago, actually. So, um, as you move farther to the right, the expenses that we have there. Is this taxable note of an option property acquisition, right?
Yeah, I was buying, right? A million dollars is property acquisition, right?
So what you've been paying on that so far to acquire property in that district is only the interest. That's what represents those first two years of the venture for that. Twenty twenty two taxable geo note. The next column to the right of that is when you refinance that, uh, balloon payment that's due in the last year. And that's what it would look like if you permanently extended that throughout the life of the district. So. When we did it, we acquired it upfront using a taxable note, but it was due in four years. And that was not enough time to pay back a million dollar obligation at that time.
Was that a million dollars?
Buying the property for TID five. Buying the property for TID, so that's all for property.
We didn't buy that property.
Yes, we did.
Bought the property?
Yeah, Andrea, maybe on the map up there, you, you didn't buy.
Just the north side.
Yeah, just the.
Is that a little growing?
Yeah, yeah, we didn't buy that, yep, up there, right, just which. How many acres was it again? Forty acres. That's where it's working.
Where's the other part going?
Part of that parcel is going to be growing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Like four or six acres, but okay, continue.
Well, that twenty twenty two taxable note and then the station's loan all represent costs related to that, uh, property acquisition. The column to the right of there, the orange, that's the growing wings and the other. And then we've got, uh, Portos twenty twenty two projects.
Oh, the, the C or streets?
Yeah, that was in that two, right? Uh, so almost, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for project costs. That's what. Uh, this is that portion, like the TID five portion from the bond, right? So. Permanent financing for the property acquisition is about ninety one thousand annual debt service. Those two five products that I just mentioned are about thirty thousand dollars for that service for a hundred and twenty three thousand in the first year. So we're really looking for that estimated valuation to come through as we start building out more and more as the years come through. Those, if those are the only two costs which we know about right now, they're gonna start accumulating positive cash flow. In the next few years as all that development starts to come through. And because realistically, you're paying, we've only got two project costs, okay, the property acquisition. And then, uh, the growing wings and some of those streets cross. Uh, so we really need that to come through, that development over time. But we're definitely projecting it to close with a positive balance by the time it's over. Like you started showing a positive balance.
Is there anything in there that has actual, I know you've got projections here, but is there anything in here as far as the, uh. What the actual developments are occurring and, and where that was showing in there too?
That, that's why we wanted to bring it up. Right now with what we had in the plan when it was done, but to ask you guys, so is there a value on the growing wings? I think you sent us an agreement on that. Uh, is there an estimate on the taxable value of that building? And then there's some potential, is there some residential potential too that, I don't know how far along that is? So what we were hoping to do, to, to your point exactly is, is. This was the plans numbers, let's start putting in growing wings and, and the project Bob was just talking about. To see how quickly we're getting to that.
The blend.
Yes, exactly. How, how quickly are we gonna, hopefully we'll be faster than what you're seeing there, but. That's the key is get, getting more and more value in there as fast as you can to increase that revenue stream in the district.
Okay, very, very respectful.
Thirty thousand a year, forty thousand a year. I, I really, if their project is, you know, just rough estimates, guys, if the project's about a million dollars. In value, it's probably about twenty thousand dollars in revenue.
So it'll be a little better than that, eh? But it's, it's better over time, I think.
Right.
Would be, it would be twenty thousand a year.
Right.
Yeah.
I think it's one point seven.
Okay.
The number that comes to mind.
Yeah, so we're, there's a share.
Share. It's a fifty fifty.
Right, so that's where I said was a shared aspect to it to him. So.
So we're gonna give them. Some funds back.
Right.
For a series of years and then. Up to a hundred and twenty thousand.
Sure, okay, we can incorporate all these lines for the development and then put it right in that cash flow.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I didn't, yeah, sorry Paul. You guys are going into that later. We, we wanted to ask the question.
All right, um.
It doesn't have anything in there as far as in TID five as part of the cost will give. What we've always had for the developmental and cost and everything for, for this property also, right? We were hooking up sewer and stuff like that over, or.
I think that's the growing wings.
Yeah. Yeah, but there was a, there's a cost associated with that that's not in, in here.
No, it was, it was that debt issue in there. You go back, I'm sorry. It's in orange. The twenty, uh, twenty to thirty, twenty five to thirty thousand a year. To pay back the utility extensions. Starting in twenty four, represents the growing wings fracture.
Okay.
Yep, it'd be the next.
So really it's gonna be kind of a wash once we start getting to.
All right, water utility, I think, from there, next. All right, uh, so again, our slides are, are words left to right. Uh, so we're, we're shifting focus now. So where, what we're gonna talk about now is your impact on your water utility and the debt associated. With either explicit water utility projects or water portions of general obligation projects. All right. So your twenty twenty one audit shows about three hundred and sixty thousand in revenues available to pay any kind of debt you've got related to. Uh, the first one that I want to draw your attention to is your twenty nineteen safe drinking water loan, right? So this is a state loan from the state of this town. So this is a revenue bond obligation. So whenever you issue debt, you have to pledge collateral for it, right? In the case of a revenue bond, you're pledging the revenues that come from that system only. And to what we've been talking about mostly is general obligation debt, which is pledging property taxes, right? So water revenues, um, are seen as not as much of like the bedrock as general obligation debt is, right? Property taxes are the most stable source. Revenues are seen as slightly different, which is why they have a different pledge and slightly higher interest rates. Okay, so for that twenty nineteen safe drinking water loan, you've got about seventy thousand in debt service. That number there you see right next to it, that coverage, five point one eight, um. When you issue revenue debt, they expect your revenues to come in at at least one point one times coverage. So what that means is for that seventy thousand, they need one point one times that to issue the debt. It's just like, um, if you have a home mortgage, they have your debt to income ratio. It's like the, the exact same thing, right? Uh, so that's what it is for the state. The minimum they want to see is a hundred and ten times your debt service. Um, for you to get revenue. You're way beyond that. So five point one eight means you're very strong. That's just for the revenue bond side. As we move farther to the right, since you've met that pledge of five point one eight. Once you start to layer in the secondary lien on that is the general obligation debt, right? Which is my property taxes, okay? So we've got some assorted water debt from previous debt issues you've done over the years. What's in blue there is the water portion from the bonds that we're talking about right now, right? By the time that kicks in, your total water, uh, utility debt. Summing up all of those payments is gonna be about, um, two hundred and sixty. And so what you're still showing is one point three four times coverage. None of the geo debt stuff, um, has that pledge where it needs to be over one point one percent. Uh, it's only the revenue debt that is based on that. So since you're at one point three four times, what that means is you've got sufficient revenues to cover all of your debt and that's very healthy. Uh, that's what we consider in, in good shape. You don't have to worry about that. Um, one, one thing, we, we probably should, we'll get the twenty two audit. Sometime in the near future, we'll, so we'll update this. This is a little bit old information, but the twenty two wasn't quite ready yet. Right, right. So we're at that, it's very normal for most communities. They're starting to get their audited financials right around this time of year. So whenever we're talking in groups right now, we always have to caveat that. All of our results are from this point eighteen months ago, which. You know, for municipal government, that's totally normal, but for my life, that seems like ancient history.
Right.
Uh, and we also don't know about any future projects that are going to require more.
Yeah, so we, we believe now the water and the sewer, these last two funding sources, we're talking are very large parts of the projects you're doing this year. And big picture, it looks like the water utility is at a point that you could add this new debt. Since the water under the bridge and water portions of the street projects that make up that blue column, the hundred and thirty five thousand a year. In payments. Based on how the, the water utility's been doing in recent years, it's affordable to add that and have the water pay it so that the tax levy does not pay it.
Anything on there have to do with, uh, again, the new growth? Is there any?
This is. Nope. Nope, and there's no impact fee, although I don't know that any of these projects are impact fee eligible, probably not.
But these projects wouldn't be, but I just wondered if there, if the revenue in there, or is that revenue go someplace else?
The, the revenue we're showing was based on the twenty one audit. We're not assuming it goes up or down, just stays at that current level. It's a.
Is that taking the fact any of the impact base board water connection to the move?
Uh, no, this is a charge from the water, uh, from the water utility itself.
Okay, so I, there is a question for you then. So on the impact fee, there's a water connection. Is that just a net?
It's for new projects related to grow.
These, these are older places. Yeah, so that just goes into, that goes into a, a, a different fund then, not, not this water utility.
I have a question on water. Sewer is.
Thanks for adding it.
Yeah.
It's a big, big picture. I think they've got, how this is working. On Zoom, yeah, okay. Um, maybe you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so the, the sewer, we will go into this in two decades, our coworker Brian did previously. Right now, with revenues from twenty twenty one, before the rate increases that Brian talked about with you guys. We could not add this debt and stay at a coverage ratio above one time. So if you look at the column on the far right. You'll see it goes just below one. But if the board does do the ten percent increase for twenty, the rest of twenty three. And the ten percent increase for twenty four. The model will cover existing debt of the sewer utility plus the new in the kind of the brownish reddish color. Uh, ninety five to a hundred thousand a year in payments for the sewer portion of the projects from this year. We don't have that ten percent and ten percent built into this right now. We're just showing it as it is. But should you make that decision to go forward, we have another model that does have the ten percent, ten percent in. And it would cover those, uh, those payments.
And that doesn't include any type of cost savings that we would have or growth?
Correct. This is jumping off from your results in twenty twenty one. Not making any assumptions about new users or new, uh, cost saving measures that you're considering.
Or any changes to impact fees.
It, I, again, impact fees can only be used for new, uh. Growth related expenses. So, uh, so it's not into this model.
But would, but those new. Would be offset by some of the cost for the utility, right?
Or for a, a new water tower, let's say. The village could use.
Let's stay on sewer.
Okay. Yeah, you do hook up fees, right?
You can't?
Yeah, but you do a. You do a hookup fees.
Sewer access.
Sewer access. Yeah, so if you have a new. Sewer treatment requirement or, or capacity.
Lift station.
Yep, a new lift station. Because of growth in the village, you could either use impact fees, oh, I'm sorry, hookup fees that you collect. Or sewer rates and charges, either one or both, pay for that.
So basically, I was, I'm not a big fan of raising rates by ten percent for sewer. So I'm trying to see what, where we can. Find a middle of the road. We've had some discussions about that, but, uh. You know, you're saying basically by this model here, that. If we don't at least raise it ten percent over two years, we're gonna fall below the minimum coverage.
That's what it's looking like, yes, yeah. Now, I do want to get the twenty two audit results because we're using the twenty ones and, and see where that shakes out on this. Uh, but based on Brian's analysis is even more in depth than what you're seeing on the screen here. Uh, and he does have these projects in there. So I, I would say it's likely if you don't do the ten and ten percent. Uh, you are going to.
Unless, unless we find some cost saving measures, right?
Correct, yeah, that's another approach.
Yeah, we gotta, we, we can either look at either up this cost to offset the increase. But if everything just stays as is, you're saying ten percent, you're ten percent, right?
Correct.
When, when we have the twenty twenty two numbers?
Pretty soon. I think your auditor was pretty soon. Yeah. So timeline was, guys, uh, what we wanted, again, thanks, you guys' patience. I know this is a lot of material. If we're, wanna proceed with the financing for all the projects we've talked about tonight. At your meeting in July, they would be what we call initial resolutions. There's a process through state statutes to issue the debt. Be a, a couple of initial resolutions on your agenda. And then in August, we would take competitive bids like you do for construction projects. And you would look at the results of the competitive bids and if you accept a little better, then that would lock into the financing at that point. Um, we wanted to introduce this today, so you kind of saw what the impact would be on the TIDs, on the utilities, on the tax levy. Get any feedback from you about it. And then if your, you know, the mind is still perceived, then it would be at the July meeting. The process starts, August, we take the bids and probably end of August, early September. Cash in hand to pay the invoices that I'm sure are starting to come in on the projects that you guys have for the summer.
So what have you been seeing for rates? Are they been going up? General obligation bonding?
They, they've kind of stabilized, uh, a couple of, you know, in the, the, uh. I already forget that, the bank, uh. But bankruptcies, a couple of those banks that went under, followed by the debt limit arguments, the market was.
That's what, that's what I'm wondering, if it's stabilized and kind of dropping though?
Yep, and the Fed didn't raise rates last time. So I think it's, it's been a little more stable.
You, you've been hearing news about increases, just, you know, it, from last year or two years ago. You've you've been hearing news about increases, just, you know, it from last year or two years ago, when we were absolutely sort of rock bottom, so now, yes, it's increased. Where we are now is about where we were four or five years ago, you know, and historic pretty low, but not bargain basement as low as you're ever going to see rates, so. You're at about four and a half percent for. Way back on slide two or whatever, or when we had the. The actual debt service schedule for all the purposes, I think the blended rate we had was four point four percent and that was half a point above the market at that point. So we always like to put in a cushion for planning purposes, if you get below that, then okay, fantastic. So we don't want to try and come up with something like right on the market and then it's up ten percent if you guys ask me like Josh, what happened, right? So I don't like to deliver bad news, but again, that's something that's. In my wheelhouse, I would love to control interest rates for you, that's something I can do, but I think it's kind of like, at least when I, you know, bought my house. When interest rates were in a range where I was comfortable with, I just kind of went with it on that day. I just said, yes, it's really hard to time it, oh, this week it's good, so do it right now, we can't really work that way, so. I think right now we're in about as good an environment as you can expect to get for the next few months unless something else. Really crazy happens, it might be a little bit higher than it is today, it might be a little bit lower, so.
I think the other issue is when larger invoicing start coming in for the projects and Chuck could speak to that better than us, because at some point. Andrea can cover with some cash you have for a little while, but at some point. You if you don't have borrowing procedures, you don't have enough company projects.
Thanks, guys, just. Going back to the minutes now, I'd like to make a motion to receive the minutes from May sixteen, two thousand twenty three and then a special meeting. May thirty first.
Can I ask a question about that? I know Chris and I had this discussion earlier. What exactly is received minutes?
I was through the League of Municipalities training that you that you received the minutes, so that way if there is any, any. Typo typo or discrepancies, you're not bound by law.
Are they ever approved?
Not according to the League of Municipalities. Are we talking about reports, are we talking about minutes? I've always heard about receiving like the treasury's report and those types of reports. And maybe they've changed their position.
I guess my impression was that we receive minutes from other committees, but we review and approve our own. Also, that's my correct. Because otherwise, how do we, I mean, if we don't review and approve them now, then they they just go on unapproved. So we can't post them until they're approved.
Doesn't matter to me either way. I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of. May sixteenth and the special meetings from May twenty third.
May thirty first. Three minutes. Twenty third, sixteenth and thirty.
Sixteen, yeah, sixteenth, twenty third and thirty.
Okay, I have a question, so if we could look at please the second page of the sixteen minutes. Where it says discussion possible maintenance parking arrangements and purchasing ordinance, when we discuss minutes, I thought we're just. Tightening up the locks, refreshing them.
I think we were going to discuss about actually like posting.
That's how it was listed on the agenda.
Posting the village. Like no parking overnight or whatever those.
Another quick question on that. Dollars not to exceed a motion I would put in for taking care of the. Cleaning up of the village hall. What was the total amount on that?
Plus the liner. Plus water charge.
Did that include time for public works guys, did they have any of that figured in for them pulling out the?
They did not charge the village for those.
I think the initial bid was like forty four hundred or something. It was going to take a lot to take the lines down, was this concern? Public works to the all their lines down, he agreed to do it without any bugs. Any other discussion? Are you none all in favor? Many reports, planning mission, June first, one twenty three, meeting report. Impossible approval resolution twenty twenty three dash oh five, establish public participation procedures for comprehensive plan. Plan update resolution.
Question, decision here.
Doug Dollar was on the Zoom for the CSN and he was. Yeah.
Hello? I I lost your volume or I lost your sound somehow.
Can you hear us now, Doug?
You're cutting in and out.
It was approved.
We approved that.
All right. Thank you.
All right, so getting back to the resolution, twenty twenty three oh five.
Yeah, it says here on the third whereas, fourth whereas, the attached village to Somerset Comprehensive Plan. Update Public Participation Plan including the written procedures, the positive public participation, are them meant to attach to this? Or? We don't have the written procedures.
Yes, I think in the same email, I don't know, maybe they didn't get in the council package, but we we do have a. There there is a public participation plan, it's a couple, couple pages long. I'm I'm happy to share it, you just have to approve it at some point, but essentially what's in that. Is, you know, what you've approved to date, you know, you're. By statute, you need to do, you need to adopt the resolution documenting your your public participation plan. Your your public participation plan includes. You know, the. The meetings and.
My question is, would that be included with this resolution is this is the written public participation plan? Or is it, or we're just.
Your the resolution is saying that you have one. Right?
What it said is adopts the written procedures included in the attached comprehensive plan update public participation plan. That's why I was asking.
Yeah, totally be attached. Do you do, you have it?
I do not have it in the package.
I mean, I, I think he, the statute doesn't say when you have to do it, you just have to do it at some point. So you could. You know, we could forward that plan to you and you could you could add that in X one fifty, so choose.
Yeah, there's no big rush in that, right?
No, just as long as it's done at some point in the process.
Can we, can we do facility stuff in with that at all? Because they're all, they were saying the facility planners need to have public participation too, can we nest that in somehow or?
Well, they're they're pretty big topics, I you know, I don't. I don't think they'll timeout the same, you know, we're we're on track to do something by end of the year.
Got it. Just seeing if we could, while we're having, while we're having the public together, we might as well get some input out of them.
Yeah, no, it's good.
Make that motion to table it till next month's meeting, till we get the, our written public participation plan attachments.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? The next month. Public Works, June fourteenth, meeting report.
So full disclosure, my computer's at two percent, so if I curse, you'll be worried. And I'll have to go out my memory app at that point. So just quickly running through some of the highlights, you know, the. The Tri-City's doing your your twenty twenty three curb and sidewalk improvements, including the turn lane. You know, their plan is to start at some point after. On the holidays, probably more towards the end of of July and then. I don't believe we we haven't scheduled a pre-construction meeting yet, but they want to do that, they're already dedicated that sometime before.
Chuck, what was, what's their anticipated or what's their contractual end date on that, on that?
I'm going off memory, but I believe it's like in September to October, you know, October, we 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 wanted to give them, you know, enough time to get. Bids and then also, you know, for some of the equipment that they need to order and some of those things, so, you know, it'll. You know, it's it's not going to require bridge closure or anything.
Right, right, no, I I think that we're we're not going to have any issues with traffic, I think it was discussed.
Minor inconveniences, yeah.
It was really kind of what when they're, because we got. This street didn't all pour up, right? Soon, and is going to be completed along with the.
Yeah, we we hope they're, you know, coordinate coordinate out well, but. Do our best, you know, we can only, can't control when they start, only when they finish.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, as as far as they're cutting, what what projects we're talking about right now is a bridge. Is scheduled to finish at the end of August, and the intersection is scheduled to finish.
I believe it's the end of September fifteenth, September seventh is substantial, fifteenth is final.
And that's the bridge decking.
No, that's the the sidewalk.
That's sidewalk, right, bridge decking the end of August still?
Yes.
The intersection, September fifteenth, you said as well?
It's final because we.
Okay, and the sidewalk?
So the the intersection, the sidewalks, all that work. Stash completion is September second, final completion is September.
Thank you.
The bridge. Final is the very first. They started on the bridge.
Monday, they're talking next week.
Just to restate that for public record, for all of our constituents, the bridge is supposed to be done August thirty first.
The bridge decking is going to be done, but the bridge will not be open until the state finishes their side of it, which is scheduled for October thirty first.
That's not correct.
If not correct, that's what they.
Workalable will be ongoing until October. But that's restoration work, that's, you know, finishing up, that's not going to repeat traffic.
When when will the bridge be open?
August thirty first.
Well, that's when it'll be done, getting redacked, but so traffic will be as soon as the bridge is redocked.
Not getting redocked. It's just the expansion that happens on the sides, the water sewer, repairing joints that be to be repaired. We can't have traffic.
So basically, basically, the the intersection will be open by that time and when the bridge is open, right, at the end of August.
That's the point of our.
That's the plan as of today, right?
So in regards to the, you know, there's going to be a progress meeting at the wastewater treatment. Facility project that'll that'll occur on Thursday. Churchill Road, the utilities there, they're into that deep sanitary sewer currently just north of Raymond, that's. And they also have another crew that's working on, you know, the the service laterals. For individual businesses and and what have you. You know, work at that windswept prairie continues, be it slow, but you know, they're. They're not making as much progress as we hope, but they're making progress, they're out there working and. Right now, they're they're doing some corrective measures, I think the DNR requiring as far as.
Any progress with getting that easement for the.
With them, the schools tomorrow morning at eight thirty.
Oh, you're in it too? Oh, thank you for facilitating that.
Uh, that's, that's some of the highlights we. Provide things on on the agenda, I believe, but that's, that's my update, does he have any extra questions?
You you committed to giving weekly updates? To on public works when the bridge project starts out?
Yep, we can do that.
That'll go to Jim or that Jim can put it on, you know, or is it going to be on the website, what's what's the process for?
Post on Facebook and. Jim can both, post on both the Facebook and website.
You know, I, do we want to, we can start those weekly updates this week on all projects if you so choose.
More information, the better, everybody wants to know, everybody's asking a question.
Can you report, I don't see it on the agenda.
I'm sorry, pardon?
It's not on the agenda, but it's, I think it was on the public works agenda, but the streetlight quotes. Where are we at with that, I think three, two or three different streetlight quotes came in.
Yeah, that's, I can, I don't know, that's under public works. It was, it was in here, we tabled it because the quotes that came back were just for installation of village provided lighting. And we don't have the numbers on the, on the, and Bob was going to get that, what the numbers would be to any placement of the lights.
Discussion possible approval of resolution twenty twenty three dash oh four compliance maintenance report resolution.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to. Prove the compliance meeting resolution. I have recommended by the board. Discussion, I just want to commend the public works for the good job on the annual report as well. And I think we asked to put that out on in the in the public. Hopefully you can get that portion.
I second those kudos. Move further discussion, all in favor? Discussion possible approval, growing wings, utility extension, good award.
So bids were left, maybe twenty fifth, and it included several of us alternates, seven to be exact. Six of those alternates were related to water main material. And so we base bid a ductile iron pipe and then we alternate bid PDC and C nine hundred pipe. And. And and then that was, that was six items there, you know. Three adding, three deleting, with the three various pipe sizes of water main. The seventh. Alternate was for a triplex lift station and a portwood duplex. Because at the time we were bidding this, we weren't a hundred percent sure that DNR. We we felt that if there was a potential that DNR might require the triplex destination. They didn't, so you know, we're not recommending awarding. With that triplex, the duplex would be just fine. We are, but we are recommending the the base bid with the other alternates. The change from the ductile iron pipe to the to the PVC pipe. And with those alternates. And with those alternates. We are recommending giving award to Miller Escalating in the amount of. Four hundred and forty-eight thousand. Four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-three cents.
Chairman, I make a motion to absolutely. The bid amount of two hundred and forty-eight thousand four seventy-nine sixty-three to Miller Escalating.
Frank from second. Discussion?
Yes, just one thing, we didn't check as a committee on that, and he's worth a little bid by substantial amount over the other bids that were submitted.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
I I oppose.
Please. Discussion possible approval, welcome home sign.
Uh, Public Works. Recommended to bring this to the board. What you have in front of you is a vote for a significantly sizable sign, a four-foot sign, uh, that's looking at about four hundred and twenty dollars to. Install it coming in on. Right by the cemetery on the island. Is where they're proposing to bring it in, I I don't even think. Four feet is. Is probably the right size, that's a pretty big. Uh, sign for that little bit of an island. Um, I would probably scale that back if the if the board wants to take any option on that, but.
I think the max width is nine feet, the taper is to three feet at the ends, right? And then there's also wiring and everything, so we're still going to have to figure out what to do with the wiring that's under there and then cap off the pole and all that, but.
It's still.
Step back off of that curve though, we wouldn't be at two, we need to be at three foot though, right?
Yeah, that's the. I think, like, make a motion to approve up to four hundred and twenty dollars for the welcome home sign, we'll just have to. Go out there with a tape measure and figure out what the right size is, so I'm sure it's going to be a little less than four twenty.
I have one other question, isn't there another welcome sign right up before the bridge?
Going into the meadows.
Sign going in the meadows.
Welcome to the meadows, or is that?
The village, it's fallen down and it's. It's going to get eventually.
One of the markers.
It's going to get swapped out with a digital one, that's a collaboration between the Lions, the Chamber, and the Village.
So many one down. It's only one down by.
Not at first.
The first one.
I'm going to return the second one, it'll be about. It's a seventy-five thousand dollar digital sign they. They raised about half the money's that far.
Right.
Are there any concerns taking a left-hand turn out of there, out of the? Hockey rink, taking a left-hand turn there, if we had a four-foot sign on top of, you kind of got an inch out there quite a bit to. Get a good line of sight to the left, that's what I say, make sure it's smaller inside the curve. An urgent motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
So it's, I just want to say welcome home, or what's the design, what is it?
Why?
I haven't seen, did I miss that?
We don't have a.
Maybe you have a picture somewhere, I thought it was all sent out before. It's not, sorry. Uh, it says, welcome home, we miss you. So if you want, right?
It doesn't.
That was that was the email, right?
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't say summer seven, it just says, welcome home, we missed you. What's that blue thing?
Number, I mean, those. Which brings us to the.
I got battery saver on. Uh, the sign and.
Anything, you can pass me.
Oh. Oh, and they both, okay, there we go. So it's for everything.
Any further discussion?
Uh. I think it's a great idea, but I think the placement is a formal idea, so I have traffic concerns and all that stuff, visibility and so, I think it could be a better place to put it than the island. That's my two cents.
All in favor?
I.
Nice.
Opposed?
I.
I. Uh, do roll call vote?
You did already, you just made a call.
Something Chris voted.
Yeah. Roll call vote?
Nick.
Hi.
Hi.
Me.
Hi.
Hi.
Nate.
First one.
Yeah. All right, where are we on here?
That's mineral. Discussion possible people task man management and mobile app. And back at here, you'll see, the committee reviewed a. An app and is recommending. That we move forward with. The development of this application for. Receive, uh, developing the app and and being able to receive push notifications from the village with regards to utilities and or concerned with public works. I think total amount was.
Was it six thousand? Six five, six thousand sixteen thousand one hundred. Bob, do you remember what it was? Yes. With all. And that's what like all. Every kitten and boodle you wanted, it would be up to that.
It's a few of the top.
It's it.
I would be moving forward with plus what it is. They have, they have to develop that, that app, you have to design, maybe it's additional information on what.
Yeah, the recommendation from the committee was the app and amount of five to six thousand. So I'll make a motion. That the the village board. Approved five to six, five, six, up to six thousand dollars for the development of the task management mobile app.
Sorry. Discussion? I have one question, how many people have we had sign up for notifications on the website so far?
Is this a yearly fee, is this a one?
One day fee.
So there's no yearly cost to it or anything like that?
Development only.
It's embedded in our GIS, we do pay a yearly fee for GIS, but it doesn't matter on the apps. This is the visitor. Okay.
Bob, if you could just kind of explain what it will do for the task management, yes, we push, do push notifications, people can. Say if there's a a street light out, people can notify Public Works right from a mobile app.
Yes, the task management to the. Mobile app is kind of two separate things, so we would have a mobile app that someone could choose to. Go on the. Uh, there you go, the app store. Download it. Sign up for whatever notifications they would like. Being from elections to village board meetings to where small emergencies, it's very kind of endless. Task management portion of that would notify staff, police department, Public Works, whoever, administration. Uh, you know, there's a pot hole, there's a tree down, a parking guy, so. It it really. Would take any, any, all situations, I mean, you run into, you know, risk child or. Some of public safety. Suspicious car, suspicious suspicious activity, and then they send that out, and then that would go into their respective department, and so then the police car will receive any. This related, administration would receive like. In general. Things, all points received. All those public works, parks, you know, parks dirty, there's glass, there's broken, we had a. Entertainment center or something, I think, the one of our parks this morning. Got a total call on it. So somebody could just, instead of looking up the number, trying to go on the website or something, we'd be going to straight London, so they had. Pretty much instant reportability to possibly, but our our respond time. Uh, would also be tracking of that, oh, um. There's also. Say, there's. An ongoing problem, it'll track, like, we're having a real problem with traffic at six o'clock in the morning. And we need to look at a timing on the flights, so. Okay, those are just some of the elements that, you know, that usually. There's things on that all-inclusive list that we don't need on there, like dead bird or bed bugs or food poisoning, you know, that's more of a.
But a motion in the second, any discussion, all in favor?
I.
Opposed? Here is public safety. The June twelve twenty twenty-three meeting report. Thanks, Chuck.
No battery, no, no computers, so what am I going to do?
Discussion possible approval temporary class B, beer retailer's license for the app or for cruisers.
We even got this.
Yeah.
It's a three, it and the three, and it's number the day.
This is my only motion to approve. Second. Discussion? All in favor?
I.
I oppose. Here is. Financial personnel, discussion possible approval, employee handbook correction, definition of part-time employees' benefits. And we're just coming into compliance with. What it should have been from our. Old employee handbook. Make a motion to approve the correction of twenty-five hours or more. In the employee handbook. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Oppose. Here is discussion possible approval, letter of credit reduction for Oberlin Homes, and whispering plans for the whispering plans in North.
We were notified by. Andrea, I believe, but with that, with everything was done and everything was to compliance by Oberlin to satisfaction of the village, so I make a motion to. End of, was it, we get back the letter, credit?
It would just be reduced to zero.
Reduce the letter of credit to zero.
Three second.
Second.
Discussion, I have one other question, are they good in all the other areas that they're in? The other areas they're building in, well, would there be any need to keep this money?
No, but I think we might. Might keep. Five, so, so might not go on these, I don't know.
While we were told that was everything.
Everything is done, I just want to look at the developers, make sure that there wasn't a.
Maybe a warranty period. You. Will you, you want to amend your?
Maybe a warranty period of all.
That's exactly.
Yeah, so I'll amend my motion to. The, uh, reduce the line of credit down to the necessary minus the warranty period. Or warranty amount.
Oh, amend my second.
Further discussion? Are you none on the favor?
I.
I oppose. What you carries. Um, the other one is done, the fire rescue, need a report.
Financing capital.
We do it.
We did.
Dollars, all right. They're talking to a professor.
No, just for.
Just maybe afford it in like ten years or something.
We just passed ahead of everybody's meeting to. They're having a party at no time.
It was from Keith Travis Blilview.
Financing, uh, building in the village hall.
Still passing the hat.
Not really.
Board members, this is an update for May twenty twenty-three, this month we responded to thirty calls for service. The breakdown is as follows, thirteen calls in the village consisting of nine medicals and four fire rescue calls, eleven in the township consisting of six medicals. And five fire rescue calls and six auto aid calls. Four in St. Joe and two in the Richmond, this brings us to a total of one hundred and fifty-nine runs for the year compared to one hundred and eighty-three for the same time in twenty twenty-two. The month may continue to our slow trend, which we appreciate with the current road and dirt situation, there's no significant calls for service. Right now, there isn't much going on other than getting ready for upcoming P soup days weekend, we are looking, we are working with the Lions, Club and Chamber. For the event as well as putting on our breakfast once again, hope to see you all there, we are currently operating with eighteen full-time members and five probationary members. As always, you are more than welcome to stop in and say hi at the station when we see, when you see someone there. We welcome visitors and are more than willing to give you a tour and show our trucks and equipment. So has anyone heard anything from Travis, have there been any issues as far as the bridge, should he? Nothing I really need as a result of it. Good. Discussion possible approval ordinance amendment, planting of trees and subdivisions.
Make a motion to approve its ordinance. Six eighty-four dash A.
Second.
Any discussion, the question I had was what? Wasn't there supposed to be a fee? Uh, scroll schedule, subject to fee schedule attached on on here as well? That was part of our.
So it's a fee schedule.
Where's that at?
Um, there was a question on. The motion. That was a different from amendment. Yep. The motion from public works. Said under fifteen dash one dash eighteen. Or that's the ordinance. Um, CP schedule, but that's.
It's a CP schedule under fifteen one.
Yeah, but that's not the, that's not the same ordinance of planting trees.
That's for the escal.
That, yeah.
Escrow.
The Lions, you are just.
Okay. So that will be a separate ordinance. Amendment.
Yeah, that was the one where you put the sodding seed in there, and then we made them.
Yeah.
Well.
And we're doing, we're working on the fee schedule next month, Johnny.
I'm already collecting, and we're already collecting, we're going to need, sorry.
Prove the ordinance now and then.
Okay, so we'll prove this ordinance, the fee schedule's already been, you know, already been established for the the amount of escrow, it's just a matter of getting the ordinance amended. So that we don't have to continually modify that, this can just be approved if the fee schedule needs to go up or or down, the board could take action at their discretion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Oppose.
Dave.
What's your feelings?
I'm saying, I'm saying.
We're getting a jail. Uh, committee appointments, we can see the attached list, and it's been worked on it.
Um, I don't know if you saw my email or not, the board of review is. Made up of the president, the clerk. And two board members. They have to be on the village board, it can't be on. I have the administration.
So we're missing one. Board member. All right, so we had Josh act on it, anybody else want to be on the board of review?
A lot of fun guys.
Do they meet often, what's? One time a year for the. One time a year when the, go through the assessments.
Well, you're the.
Does anybody want to be on it?
He's trained.
Yeah, there is a training about.
Yeah.
Then on it, he's trained.
You want to be on it?
Sure.
All right, so cross all should read link. And then. That's real.
Can you cross out Kenneth name and two? There's only four.
There's only four. Anybody else have any questions or anyone to make motion?
Or someone to find into the board of zoning appeal?
Say that again?
The board of zoning appeal, did I miss that? The same board review, I think it is.
It's different. For the fields.
But that's the first one is.
Oh, sorry.
It was. Should have been.
It was made dire. Oh, gosh.
Well, there may not a whole lot change, so.
We need to have a motion on this. And this all.
He appoints a new.
Make motion of the appointments as presented in this uh. Email dated Tuesday, June the twentieth.
In a second.
With with the the change of Sherry Link, Chris Muriel. On the board of review.
Right, a crown second. Discussion. All in favor?
Uh I.
Oppose. There is. Uh discussion possible approval, village board listening sessions at Market Fest and this is Chris Dubak.
Fine, well, I actually burned in reminding me that this could be really way to connect with public. I was at some comments or questions from them in a little more. You know, casual environment than a board meeting. So I was, I guess I was kind of hoping that we could have a couple of board members. Attend um a couple of the meetings, maybe add one from public, some one from um. The public works, you know, at the same time, so cover all the bases. And I guess I'm wondering what you guys think about this again. Would you be willing to participate? Would you sign up for a time slot?
I think it's a great idea. I would love it if uh you and I would like to do the first one. Um is that this Thursday? Sign up for this Thursday?
That's pretty quick to get the word out.
No, I saw, yeah, right. Sorry. Maybe next Thursday. And then it's also like, I'll probably be there most Thursdays. Caleb was already there. We might have to, we might have a forum of the board.
Yeah, you probably just gonna want to notice it just in case.
Are we, are you talking about the whole time or is it gonna be a couple hours of of, you know, this, cause that could be a long time for people.
Right, no, I figure putting maybe two hours, you know, a time slot somewhere in the middle. Four hours.
But people are gonna be there probably to notice it from four to eight, right? So that way. People are coming along.
You mean having the. I would put the notice for the forum of the board for the entire time, but I think they're talking about how long they would be sitting there.
Right, right. Yeah, we gotta stand. With team.
Other snacks.
That's not the budget, Caleb.
I'll bring my own.
So you're thinking like a two hour. Uh listening session, would you sign up for that then or what as a?
I'm making motion to approve the village board listening sessions at Market Fest and have. Chris Dubak be the liaison for scheduling board numbers. From anytime between four and eight on those Thursdays. And having it noticed um. In writing as a possible forum.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
I.
Oppose. Which carries. Facility assessment proposal.
Well, if we're looking at approval or. Right, so we probably want to decide if we're gonna be. One of those two or you want to talk about that next one. What are you thinking?
I guess one comment I might want to make is they want to talk to Village of Albany. Because they just went through this process there. Uh they looked at what their needs were for possible. Your municipal building, fire and EMS. And all the different costs and we did this assessment and had some folks come in and did those reports, so.
We table that for the time being until.
This one proposal is from August of twenty twenty two. They can regulation to start. Keeping the. Cost the same for almost a year. And.
First.
Said a couple of times, they came and presented and I don't know why we would continue to. Put it on, either don't do it, say, no, we're not gonna do it or.
I would say, no, we're not gonna do it until we can actually afford it. My things. Spend twenty eight thousand. For a seven million dollar building that we can't afford.
Twenty four thousand four hundred is one and then.
The other one, I S G has got a twenty four or five um. Cost on it, that covers everything, but they said they could give date. I S U would create fifty percent of compensation earned in this proposal towards improvements in subsequent project fee. So they've kind of said if there's a condition, they move forward with it, they 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 willing to kick some of that money. That gets a credit. But. There's a lot to take in here tonight. I'd like to think about it a little bit. I think one more month, it wouldn't hurt.
I put it on the agenda for next month for a vote of yes or no. And if so, we award it.
Uh yes or no or. Put it off with another further date down the road. Well, let's do the three options. Decide to take it off during the next month. Yeah, Morgan?
I bet you made them on the table.
Sure, I did. Able to next one.
There's a second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
I.
Oppose. Okay, here is. Uh the discussion, conduct of village board members at village sponsored events.
I put this on here because. Regardless of trustee or the person that brought it to light. I feel I heard, we heard one story, one here, both sides of the story. Uh where's that tonight? And I feel that uh if something like that were to happen, I feel that's unacceptable.
Fair enough.
I feel if I, if that happened to me, you guys would have voted me out.
Under investigation, I can't speak to it. We'll be careful come out, so I'm not too worried about it. Any other discussion? Public comment is closer.
Uh they can, they can't talk.
Can convene, convene the closed session as per Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five parent one, parent E. Delivering or negotiating specific. Public business, whatever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, Roman's purchase agreement and development agreement and economic development update. That we are in a closed session.
And it's gotta be a roll call.
Motion to go into closed session, roll call vote.
Maybe you stuck in.
Sorry, your second. Roll call.
Josh, I got. First. Give Karen a.
Let's do that guy.
Myself, I. Danny, I'm ready for that.
So did the rules change where you can't talk on the topic from before?
Caleb Grant, make a motion to.
You know, curb the bells, I know.
Yeah, now you made a motion.
Make a motion.
Take a motion to.
Right, for a second. Discussion. Favor.
I.
Uh coming out of closed session, nothing to report.
Should have done that.
I didn't, I know.
Somebody jumped it on.
Hey, I got me.
Right, a girl second. All in favor?
I.
Oppose. Well, we are done. At nine forty nine. E M. It was longer than expected, but.